Being past seven o'clock, I'm going to open this meeting. We're going to skip all of the mail bill, general admin discussion to the back end so we can get started with our public hearing for evaluating. And I will let Phil take over with the order.
Okay, thank you. So, we have four topics to cover tonight. We have odor, noise, soils, and some of the wetland access, the access to 20 over the wetlands on the VGG property. So, I thought we would start with the odor discussion we have with us tonight. Ned Ostojic, who's with Odor Science and Control at Connecticut, who is our peer review odor expert, who has had a chance to look over the information that has been provided to the town. And so, I'll turn it over to Ned to give his comments and his perspective on the odor mitigation plan. And then, I'll ask Jim Philbrook, the Health Director, if he has any comments on that issue as well. So, Ned?
I had a chance to review what was named odor management plan, odor mitigation plan for the proposed facility. And in essence, there are several issues that I would like to bring up that are relevant to the town of Charlton. From the standpoint of odor handling, the facility is proclaimed to be a closed-loop system. You can think of it as a submarine. The air goes around and around, and odor control therefore is an internal issue directed towards maintaining odor control, odor levels inside of the facility. There is only a scant mention of air leaving that facility. There is one mention in that report which refers to that the only exception to the closed loop would be the ventilation air. So, that's number one. And number two, references that every effort would be, that be, an effort will be made to try to prevent the odors from escaping. So, it's a relatively simple situation. If you maintain the odors in that closed loop inside of the facility, very low levels, then it doesn't really matter if those odors either escape as fugitive emissions or they are actually emitted as ventilation requirements may dictate. But if those levels inside are not that low, and if they do escape to atmosphere, then they could potentially reach what is known in jargon as receptors, i.e. people who smell them, in the neighborhood. So, the question is, how high are those odors inside? To that, we do not have the answer. We don't know. The controls that are proposed to maintain the low level of odors inside are, many of the efficiencies of those controls are essentially unsubstantiated and in some ways implausible. Now, if, as I said, this is an important issue. From the standpoint of the proponent of the project, the effectiveness of how odor control functions inside of the facility is an internal issue. From the town standpoint only, the air that leaves the facility and potentially impacts the town is of concern. So, we raised the issues regarding the two proposed control technologies inside the facility. There's an ionization control, which puts forth claims such as terpenes emanating from marijuana processing will be decomposed into water and carbon dioxide. Rather implausible statement, keeping in mind that you have the devices that are listed in the back of the report. Talk about thousands of cubic feet per minute of air being treated with the energy inputs in the order of few watts, rather watts, I'm sorry. Which means in essence that you could achieve an energy-wise sufficient reduction in odors through that technology by just turning on a few nightlights. So, that was flagged as a unsubstantiated, let's call it, claim for effectiveness. The other one is, the other one is activated carbon absorption. And the expectations of the proponent regarding the effectiveness of activated carbon is again, let's call it optimistic. The type of equipment used in the control of the odors indoors is, could be best qualified, quantity, described as thin bed activated carbon absorption, on the order of two inches or so. The expectation of the lifetime of carbon, let me just state that carbon is very effective in general. It could be a rather effective way to treat odors such as those that emanate from marijuana. But what needs to be understood is that the carbon capacity for odor absorption decreases with time. And so, at some point, the odor simply breaks through, breakthrough. If the, if the device is a thin bed device, the breakthrough will occur faster. If a device is a deep bed device, the odor, the odor breakthrough would take longer to occur. So, from the standpoint of expectations of the lifetime of carbon, it appears that the report is off mark because they are saying that it would be two and a half or so years for the breakthrough to occur. Now, breakthroughs of order of years, a year or two or something like this are typical for what is in industry known as deep bed carbon absorbers. Now, those are on the order of three feet or so, thirty-six inches instead of two. So, we are talking about eighteen times more carbon per similar flow of air. Now, those type of devices offer better assurance that the odor will actually be controlled and most importantly, they offer a way through monitoring to predict the breakthrough. So that if you have a deep carbon bed, you are in a position to know that the breakthrough is going to occur in months or two or something like that, and you can act accordingly. With thin beds, you do not have that one. So, if, it is kind of left, left open when these, when these units are going to be and how they're going to be changed. So, those questions, those issues were raised in our report, which had been circulated, I presume it was put on the town web or something, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so it was available and you probably have seen it too. So, you're welcome, of course, to address that. That apparently, I think, was also supplied to the proponent and in response to that. Yesterday, we received a reply. Now, these key questions that I just brought up are the same, that there is no change in any of those statements that I referred to today. Those are the same. The only difference, the only addition essentially to, in a new report, are some commitments to do certain things towards monitoring and getting a better grasp on the, on the odor emissions from the facility. Now, in terms of town standpoint, I think it's very important to insist that any odor, unless it's, first of all, unless it's proven extremely conclusive that the odor levels inside the facility are indeed very low and thus inconsequential, therefore, if they escape to town, well, so what? Unless that's the case. Then what needs to happen is that any odor that actually is either deliberately emitted out as needed maybe to ventilation requirements or escapes as so-called fugitive emissions, that that odor need, is low. Somehow or another, that has to be assured. That assurance has not been provided yet. Now, it is possible to do that. From an engineering standpoint, there's nothing magical about that. You could, you could take those streams that are emitted to the outside and put deep bed activated carbon units on them, which is what we suggested in our report. That has not been addressed in, in the reply. So, I think that for the town to understand what, what is going on is that the thrust of the proposal is that the air inside the facility is going to be maintained low, but there is no evidence that that's going to be the case. If that is so, well, then whatever air is either emitted or somehow is expected to escape, there has to be assurance that that will be controlled, either prevented from escaping or, and rather, controlled to a very low level through essentially a best available control technology, which in fact is carbon. Carbon is, okay. Well, that's basically the outline, you know? That's, that's basically my thinking on the, on the whole issue. And I suppose if there are any questions, obviously, the weather has read the report, has seen whatever I said now in more detail.
Thank you. So, I want to, I want to make a quick comment. So, your engineer wasn't able to make it due to snowstorm, and I just wanted the, the audience to know that so we don't have the, the engineer's insight today. So, I will open it up to some questions, but just to save time, I want you to be, I want you to tell, I want you to give me your sale of approval. So, if the engineer, if your engineer will work with our engineer to make our engineer happy, then it'll be much easier for, to just come and present that, they might know this is, this is, either they agree or disagree, and this is what, that makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, we apologize, our engineer is coming from Canada, kind of got caught in the storms that left Chicago yesterday and unfortunately couldn't get a plane to get down here. But we did reach out to make sure she will be available to communicate directly. They can discuss certain technologies or any specifics, but I think based on what you've explained, I, I think that it can be done, and I think we just have to tighten up our plan to satisfy you, and I think that she can certainly address that for us.
Do we, do we?
Can I chime in there? I think what they ought to be working on is three things. Number one, an O and M plan, just regular maintenance, operation, what's where and how to, ongoing. There also ought to be a monitoring plan, just to make sure that the O and M is working. And there ought to be, I'm curious, is there a performance standard for odor?
No, in essence, the answer, the easy answer is no. There are some, but they are not very effective. And with regards to OEM and all those good things, as I mentioned, it is very important to have a focus very clear. Operation is an indoor issue. And of course, it is good for everybody involved, including the workers in there, that the odors be maintained and the emissions, the process be maintained low. But that in itself is not necessarily an issue of concern to the town because only the stuff that escapes the facility is of concern. That must be low enough not to interfere with the town.
Is it possible to target the operation and maintenance plan to those emissions that are escaping the facility?
Absolutely.
That's what I would.
That's, that's what we propose to do. So, so, we don't feel that, you know, interfering with their operations or trying to do this or that, the other way, that's their thing.
And is the goal not to be able to smell anything?
No. Well, the, I, I know the goal, wait a minute. The goal is something that is typically in situations like this, determine some kind of, some kind of a democratic process or perhaps even a judicial process. Hopefully, it does not get to that point. But it is, it is understood by many regulatory agencies and jurisdictions in the country that some low level of odor in proximity of industrial facilities is, is to be expected. So, this is a general framework, but if you look at the legislative, the legalistic issues regarding to that, again, it is deliberately left very vague. Every, every state in the country has a clause, a so-called nuisance plan in their regulations that overrides everything else. So, if the community complains, that is an indication of a nuisance, and then it becomes a thing that starts the wheel moving. It's a complex thing. It is not like in the case of odor, it's, you know, you've got five decibels and ten decibels, you're either here or there. This is not as simple.
I recall once seeing, are you familiar with the Ringelman smoke chart?
Yeah, of course.
I, I recall seeing something for odor like that.
Well, yes, there are things, there are, there are. But the question is, there are two issues. One, how do you actually measure this, which would seem to be simple enough, but it isn't because of the complexities of odor sense. I don't get into that, I don't believe this is the forum for it, but we'd be happy to elaborate in other ways. So, that's, that's one issue, the measurement. And then, where do you draw a line? That is, to a large extent, socio-economic issue too, because in some communities, you have, you have people complaining about odors that are next to impossible to detect, and some who tolerate odors that would knock you off. So, it is not something that can be truly handled with one cookie cutter type solution.
Thank you.
Can we have Mr. Philbrook speak to the questions? Jim?
Hi, I'm Jim Philbrook, the Charlton Health Director. I think in response to your comments about nuisances, I think Charlton had promised in the past about odor compliance from the town of South Virginia, Cancela, and they've had a scientist sit down, Joanne Shadkins, and say, we never have any odor, it can't be controlled. Anything can be controlled under best practices, but still, again, we've had hundreds of complaints of odors. And I did call the DEP and speak to Michelle Delmar, because I'm the one that has to respond if there is a nuisance complaint of odor or noise. And she said that she's been responding to the town of Franklin to their marijuana facility, and it stinks, basically what she said. So, she said that she's written up a notice, a notice that they would have to comply with. The only one that could shut them down is the Attorney General. I called the town of Franklin today and spoke to the building inspector, who was quite perturbed that I had dared to call him because he's sick of Charlton people calling him. But he did say, and I was quite shocked, and he did say that there is no odors, they installed air scrubbers, and I go there every day and there's no odor. So, I said, well, then you should call the DEP because they were writing up a report that there is a violation of odors. And I did read that report for the odor report from VGG, and I think it should say zero emissions and have air scrubbers installed because best practices could mean anything. So, I just don't want to be responding because the facility would already be built and it would already be going before I ever respond. And I would be continuing responding to odor complaints with very little authority to close them or do any enforcement. I have hundreds of complaints from the residents of Charlton, already from the landfill, and finally the DEP finally did an enforcement the day they closed. So, I don't want to get caught up in that. So, I would need better assurances for the board, as we discussed in our meeting, there would be zero odors outside the building. So, that's all I have to say.
My, so I have a question, and it might be more of a legal thing. Could conditions, could a condition be that there would be fines for odor issues, a daily fine or whatever? I don't, Jim probably knows some of that.
You probably want more. I do think you're allowed to, but I think the dollar mark is.
Regulated.
Yeah.
Only as incentive to fix problems as soon as we hear, I mean, when, all we do is read and about facilities, and we, I, I read that there are places, obviously, color doesn't always seem to be best practice, where there's just, the odor goes on for years and it's lawsuits and everything else. I just don't want that to, and I'd rather have that in control.
I think, you know, Jim would be the best person to answer that question, but I believe for the landfill, it defaults to the DEP for, for the enforcement. I'm not sure the town has the ability to impose fines for odor violations, but we should ask the Health Director.
And how we would even be able, is it the human nose that goes out and, so I, I don't know enough, right? If you were.
Yeah, we can save that when it comes back and if I have a question.
Do we have more questions on the board?
Wait.
Do we want to open it up to, do we want to open it up to the public while we have a few minutes?
Sure, yes.
All right, so, I'm going to open it up to the public, but please stick to odor. We're going to talk, we have a lot of subjects tonight, so if we, if we, if specific odor questions, we'll see if we can get those answered for you.
Roger Clujia, 17, Coburn Road. Now, my question is, and I don't, it's a legal question more than anything else, but could there be a bond that, you know, it seems like everybody wants the best, best intentions, but if it becomes, odor becomes such a big issue, I mean, can the town protect itself with some type of bond that they could then somehow or another cash in to get the systems upgraded so the odor would be acceptable or hopefully disappear? Just, just a thought.
I'm sorry. Let me get one question, please. Do you want to say that one more time?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just asked if they could put up a bond that could be cashed if odor became such an issue and they weren't able to control it and it became a real problem, you know, as opposed to a fine. But the idea is to get it fixed. Generally, money fixes most, most problems, I would think. As he had said, if you spend enough money on it, I'm sure you can get the odor down, right?
The fines associated with an odor complaint, if I responded, are very, from two, two, from $25 to $50 to $250, that's it.
I just asked if there was a bond, if they, if they could.
That would be up to the planning board to come to agreement.
Is, is that a legal, is that like a national?
That, I guess that's why I said it was a legal question.
That's federal law, chapter 111, it governs boards of health.
You can only have a fine for an existing regulation that's being violated, so. You use bonds all the time for this kind of thing. So, it'll be something I explore with the applicant when we go to making conditions. Thank you.
One other question.
25, Ross Sturrock. How often the filters, this odor eliminating filters will be replaced?
Ma'am, while Sony wasn't available tonight, I'd like to ask if Mike Thornton from Vanderwild might be able to speak to that briefly, because I think, you know, the filter replacement schedule and, and it's a little bit of our O and M, it's part of our O and M.
So, is, do you want to go to the slide or just answer the question?
You can just say so.
Okay, so, so, as part of the filter change, as the doctor had said, the, you know, the depth of the filter and the amount of carbon on the surfaces has a lot to do with the removal efficiency. So, in the odor mitigation plan, we, Sony and we're working on the HPC side, you know, have to get together and come up with a plan based on the filter manufacturer that you're selecting and the technology, the depth of the filter. So, the, what we're trying to do is get to a program so once a month, that samples of the filters are taken out and go, go back to the manufacturer to be tested for the amount of activated carbon left in the filter so you know what the lifetime is left on the filter, so you can change the filters before they actually get depleted. As the doctor said, once the carbon is depleted, the, it does not affect, terpenes do not attract to the sites on the, on the carbon filters. So, that would be part of the O and M plan that was mentioned for the filters, and that has to work hand in hand with the vendor of the filter and the selection to make, make sure you have the right amount of dwell time in that filter for the air and the velocity going through it. Do you think I answered it?
You don't know, answer please.
Most of the filter vendors, and they all vary depending on the amount of carbon, but they range from six months to two years, right?
That's not true, to start with. And the people from California complaining that first year, everything is fine, and then production people start to say, because these filters, why they doing this cycle, is very expensive, very.
So, as soon as, as soon as they come up with their plan, we'll also.
My plan, you have to be involved in this cycle.
We, and we, we're, we're having them come up with a plan and we'll, as soon as we get it.
No, 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 changing the filter stages.
And there'll be a maintenance plan that will require, so we'll be, and it will be public.
In public, outside of this cycle, of this loop. They send somewhere, how do you know that they send it?
I mean, all we can do is take the documents that we get, so I, I can't do more than that.
For the, for the engineer, so you had mentioned that you, you read something about their process. So, you saw some document, I guess, that, that you were, you were concerned about?
Well, the mitigation plan.
So, you saw that, I guess that hasn't been shared yet. But, but that was based on, on the internal level being very low. We don't know that could be the case in this, correct?
Right.
So, we don't, this is good, we're kind of breaking new ground here. They, they could be very high inside. I would suspect they probably would be.
They could be, and what I think from the standpoint of, of town, if the evidence and assurance were provided in the odor mitigation plan, that the odors inside the facility would be maintained at a very low level, then I'd say, who cares? You know, if that indeed is a low level and it escapes, well, it's going to be dispersed in very brief time and there'd be no issue. That, that assurance was not provided.
So. And then, and then you did, you said, actually, that quote that I wrote down, you said, I think it can be done, it could be done, probably, probably, it could be done. But then, but then you made one other interesting comment, and I'll end with that, is that you said in industrial facility like this, you, when you looked at the plans, you're actually convinced this is an industrial facility?
Well, that's a question, semantics, what you call best or not. Anything that produces odors that has to do with processing and so forth probably would fall in the category of industrial facility. But that is really not so important as is the actual mechanism and the operations that lead to generation of odor. So, and of course, control of that emission, right?
Yeah, yeah. I think it is a little more for the town, but thank you.
I did watch length to 78. So, my first question, I had a couple of questions. Number one is, what is in the odor? Does anybody know what is in the odor?
According to the applicant, the dominant component of the odor are so-called terpenes. The terpenes are a complex organic compound, you know, with a lot of rings in it and, you know, the bond sticking all over the place. And they would probably be something that you would associate with vegetation type of terpenes.
So, I guess it's fair to say at this point in time, we really don't know what's in the odor, that's one of the components of it, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And to get that information is provided by the applicant, correct?
Yes, only that the, that the odors are in the family of terpenes.
So, it's very disappointing that this industry has not really put, it seems to me anyway, a due diligence to what exactly is in the odor. Because odors are very dangerous and people, I mean, human beings, basically, when you have a bad odor, you know, you stay away from it. It's your, it's your natural instinct to stay away from it because it's a trigger mechanism for your brain to sense that it's dangerous. I know this for a fact. Unfortunately for me, I suffered a serious injury working with compost years ago. And it was the same kind of bologna that's going on here with, you know, oh, it's just odor and it's harmless and all this kind of stuff. The truth of the matter is, is that what I was breathing in was extremely dangerous. But the spin that was put on it by the industry and by, you know, the people who, you know, were, you know, could care less about me or any other person for that matter. Turned out, I was breathing in super high levels of bacterial endotoxins that were produced by the compost, as well as super high levels of fungus and bacteria, other bacterias. I worked there for six years, and in five years, I was hospitalized three times with serious blood clots, to the point where they were waking me up in the middle of the night to see if I was still alive, because people don't survive blood clots. Only to find out on my own that I was being gassed and poisoned, and then went back and forced the doctors to do the tests, that all came back positive. My blood level was four times the limit from mold. And then, it, it. And then, it was, it's outrageous. So, when we start talking about these guys building a million-square-foot facility that is absolutely, you know, enormous for this area, for any area for that matter, I went to the Worcester facility, very small, it's seven thousand square feet of grub. If you walk around the facility, it stinks. I've met the neighbors around there, it's an industrial area, they tolerate the odor, but it stinks, nobody knows what it is, it smells like skunk, okay? Speaking with the people that manage the place, they say, "We know it stinks, and there's nothing you can really do about it. You can, you can do the carbon filter routine and you can, you know, all these things, O and M plans, all that stuff doesn't mean a thing. Once that stink gets out there and gets going, you know, people are breathing it in."
Do you have a question, or can I, can I take your comment?
So, so how many, so how, how often is, or is the air in the building gonna be exchanged? In Worcester, it's exchanged three to ten times per day. So what is the volume of air that's gonna be expended from this building? It's a million square feet, how, what is the cubic, cubic foot number?
But let me, let me interject in a moment. See, what goes on in the facility is one issue, but what.
Sorry, I, I don't believe it is, because what's gonna happen here is that in the, in the, in the facility, there will be, will be problems with employees, because you, you're basically building a bubble and, and they're gonna be trapped in this bubble with bad air, and having to get the air out. So, once that air has to get out, guess what, you know? And that's where the problem is. So, again, a piece of paper, this stuff works, harsh reality is, if the building has, you know, how many cubic feet have to come in and out of this building per day? In Worcester, it's three to ten times. And that's why they, it's, the stink is, talk to the owner, he admits it, he says, "This is a huge problem, we're very fortunate, we have good neighbors and we're in room three and we're a small facility." Okay, this one is a hundred and forty-two times bigger than that. And if you really think that you're not worried about a stench in our neighborhood, you are just sorely mistaken, okay? And once you get that stench, there is nothing you can do about it. You can call D E P till you're blue in the face, it is not gonna change anything. And fines and, and giving, you know, bonds and all that stuff isn't gonna mean a thing. So how many feet, how many cubic feet, did I answer the question?
I'm, I'm sorry, we don't, that, that part of the design's not complete yet, that's, that's part of a, a next stage of this, um, it's not part of the site plan process.
So, so again, here we go again, current information that is not being answered. And when we ask current questions about volumes of things, the things that really matter, the answer is, "We don't understand the question, or we don't have the answer." It's very disappointing.
That, that kind of oversight, that is more like Department of Public Health and stuff? I mean, obviously, that's not the plan for, I think.
That's a bill, 'cause you, you're required by, based upon the size of the bill, how many air, how many times an hour a building needs to get changed over the internal, yeah? That's like the.
So that would be current?
So, so, ma'am chair, I live there only at seventy-five percent capacity, because of what happened to me? I shouldn't have to move, because there's orders in my heat, but I, I can't, I, you know, I, I have to walk around my backyard with a mask on, and, and that's just unacceptable.
Alex G, eighteen Oldmester extension, um, in two thousand seventeen, a facility in Lowell was actually fined by Mass D E P, it was a tofu facility because of odor. Um, and they were fined twenty-seven thousand three sixty. So in response, they put in an odor mitigation plan that required them to install a third-party eight-hundred number for residents to complain, and they had this whole plan put in place so that, knowing that they had broken the rules, to mitigate the odors and to make it better. Could we put a stipulation in that says, "We're going to assume that they're going to follow the rules, but if they don't, that there's this third-party odor mitigation system put in place so that we know that there is a catch-all if they do not follow the rules that they're putting in place?"
You can, you can add reasonable conditions even at the expense of the applicant. That's a quote from the lead case on site plan approval. The question is, what's a reasonable condition? I'm a lawyer, that's our expert, their expert's not here. I want to put those two people together, and I want them to give us as much information conclusively as they possibly can, so that we're not left with our fingers in the wind guessing whether or not it's gonna work, or what it's gonna look like. That's why I want an O and M plan and a monitoring plan and a contingency plan for afterwards if this all doesn't work, whether it's a bond or it's an eight-hundred number. Let the best minds in the room do their job first, let them come back to the board, let's talk it through, let's put a condition together. But make no mistake about it, and I want everybody on that team to understand what I'm saying tonight. I've said it to their lawyer on the phone today. This is a site plan approval, you don't punt big stuff down the road. You end with a public hearing with that information in hand, and it's in the permit. So if there's gonna be an O and M plan, it's stapled to the back of the permit. If there's gonna be some sort of a monitoring plan, it's stapled to the back of the permit. If there's gonna be a contingency plan, whether it's a bond or it's an eight-hundred number, it's stapled to the back of the permit. We're not leaving anything to, we'll figure it out in April, that's not what this is about. I wasn't looking for applause.
The facility installed, uh, odor mitigation, uh, one-eight-hundred number, that doesn't work, you've been doing it for four years, have over four hundred responses, and like I said, all it is, is a response with a, a paperwork, and then the D E P finds them. It doesn't help the town at all, it's just a, it's just a ruse. It's, it doesn't work. To have a third party that comes in, that the only thing you can do, use is your nose to sniff whether it's, uh, smells bad or not, is ridiculous. So nuisance complaints under the authority of the local board of health to respond, D E P does not have local authority.
I'm gonna come up so I can sit down.
John Sandborn, twelve Jennings Road, in Charleston. Resident, also chairman of the board of health here in town. Um, I live four miles from the facility, I don't expect to ever smell anything. But, um, simple math here says you got a, up to a million-square-foot facility, thirty feet high, thirty times one, thirty, thirty million square feet, thirty, up to thirty million cubic feet of air to somehow go in and filter, so, I don't know, maybe you could answer? I mean, is there, is there anything out there? That, we've been told that this would be the largest indoor marijuana cultivation facility in the United States, if I'm, if I'm.
North America.
In North America, alright. I mean, is, is, is the plan that's currently available even based on some sort of model that says, "Well, on a facility that's a hundred thousand square feet, we know that you'd have to use X amount of carbon and have the air filtered X number of times per day." I mean, thirty million cubic feet of air potentially, if it's, if it's all going through cultivation. And before you answer that, I just want to do one other thing. At previous meetings, I understand the folks here at, at B G G are gonna operate one of the facilities, think of it as like a longhouse, but then they're gonna have three or four other leases potentially for other growers. And I can just, I can already tell you, I can, I don't need a crystal ball to tell me what's gonna happen. If there's odor, somebody will be sent to the facility, and they're, they're gonna be doing this. It's, well, it's gotta be them, because look, our filters are good, we had, we just had them tested. That's another issue, thought I'd bring it up. But sir, getting back to the first question.
Yes, I think the, the important distinction here is the gentleman raised, uh, a question of worker exposure in essence, he having suffered some, some thing. So, so there is a concern about that, but I believe, uh, the thrust of the concern today here is the off-site issues, right?
Correct, oh, yes.
Uh, i- if that's the case, then what you have to do, you have to capture the orders, and in other words, that there are points in that facility where these orders are going to be emitted to atmosphere either deliberately or potentially escaped. Two things, if they're emitted deliberately, you have to know how much you'd emitted them. And if you don't know, then it has to be a maximum amount that could be emitted, that needs to be addressed through a technology that's both effective and that allows prediction of its performance. Uh, what comes to mind is a deep bed carbon absorber, because that is, first of all, proven on a large range of, of orders which this would fall basically into that range. And more, maybe even more importantly, if you periodically measure a deep carbon bed, you have an advanced notice of potential breaks. So the bed could work for a half-year or a year, or, yeah, but you can monitor the advance of that carbon absorption zone, it's called. That zone is, is something that you can monitor, and when that approaches the end of the bed, you say, "Okay, stop, change." So that needs to be in there one way or another, uh, as far as, as far as my perspective on it. If we, if we don't have a very clear understanding of what odor levels are inside, and there is a danger of them escaping out there, then what has to happen is that any odor emitted deliberately has to pass through a control device, satisfies two things, one is it's very efficient, and the other that, that allows reliable prediction of performance. The thin, thin bed, uh, units being sent somewhere for analysis do not fall in the category.
One final thing, and I'll turn it over to somebody else. Um, it's, it was briefly stated about order conditions, and I think, you know, this is, this board here needs to be very, very cognizant of what conditions should be placed, so that if and when this facility does go into operation, residents don't have to pay the price down the road potentially for, in this case, odor issues. Because if and when odors do occur, they're gonna be coming to the other end of Town Hall and coming to see our board of health agent and into our names, so.
Thank you, that's why we have a fabulous attorney advising us.
Yes, thank you very much, alright, thank you.
So, I want us for our attorney. What, what are the ramifications if we end up getting, having odor at our schools that are about a mile as the crow flies downwind from this facility?
I, I think that the approach of the board should be to design the conditions for the facility to anticipate a, a worst-case scenario. Now, I don't know what that is, is it zero emissions? That was a suggestion somebody made, or is it a tolerable emission? But I wanna have, I wanna hear the discussion between the experts. I don't decide these things, because I, if, if I thought I had a, a, a condition of some sort, I'd go see a doctor, I'm not gonna guess at it. Let's let the doctors do their work.
Is there a question? Board questions?
I do have one more question.
So a lot of the, the state doesn't always get things right, but they did mandate the cannabis commission a hundred thousand square-foot maximum grow facility. For, and, and this is going to be a million square feet. So the state was probably thinking, I would think it's, to be able to control the odor on, on a seventy thousand square foot like the one in Lowell, or a hundred thousand square foot, a million is, is, it's exponentially that much more difficult to control that odor. It's not, it's not ten times harder, it's probably thirty times harder, based on the C F M and everything going on inside the plant. It, it's a very difficult, untested thing to do, in my opinion.
There are issues, there are engineering issues, to a logic that there are two parts of issues. Engineering issues in essence, but in order to, some, for something to become an engineering issue, the parameters have to be adequately quantified. So when you bridge, when, when you build a bridge, you have to know how wide the river, right? Well, for odor, you have to know how much odor you've got in there. And those, that information is missing at the, at the moment. I would not personally feel comfortable getting into any projects without that information being acquired. I believe that the second submittal of, that the applicant is directed in that direction, in other words, they're talking about acquiring the information, so that's, that's a positive move. Um, in terms of, uh, of performance, uh, I mean, we send the stuff to Mars over there, this is, this is nothing compared to that. In other words, it is all within a well-established technology, uh, more a matter of money than anything else. The, the equipment has to be sized properly, it has to be placed in, in proper locations, and it's been done millions of times, without exaggeration. It's a very common technology which, which promises to be effective in this case, so I, I would think.
We have done, we have done the same as our articles, you know?
So I'll just make the, the ideas work together, and we'll hear from you guys again, um, and just, it's gonna be growing, composting, and processing, and I just want to make sure that, that, 'cause we haven't heard the kind of like the composting piece, and if there's any additional odor, I know we're talking about the type of composting that you are gonna be doing internally. I just want to make sure that's also captured, I don't know, um, as, as part, 'cause I'm sure there's odor that comes with the composting of marijuana also, and it, you just want to kind of get that on record, and we will, um, figure out the next, the next time that we can get the, the engineer back. Should we, should we, wanna just?
Yeah, I think we can go on to the next topic then. So Ned, I think we'd ask you to root, to, to consult a few, um, to, to look at solutions that possible.
Yes, I think what we should do, you and I probably hit on the phone and go into the more detail as to how that would work out, right? And then we see that. But in any case, we have to jointly do this, because I have no position to the, on my own.
But I, I think there should be unlimited and unfettered contact between your Canadian snowbound scientist and ours. We don't need to be in the middle of it, just let them do their, their jobs.
I will send an introductory email tomorrow, I will copy you on the email so that you see that it takes place.
Yep.
And then I will leave it to them and suggest that whatever they do, they report back to Mr. Stanlock.
I ask a question, you brought up compost. I was, I'm not able to see anywhere in their plans or anything where they're, they're stating what the volume of compost is that they're gonna have and have on the property.
And that's why I brought that up, so you, you're also in the, the, the internal composting going on, and I just don't want us to miss that in our evaluation process, I would just think of.
This is a final maybe note, I would need to stress, that our expertise is in the field of odor only. There are all kinds of issues that have popped up even now and do pop up all the time, health-related, various exposure-related things that are not strictly in order. Odor is a sensation, and we address that. Do you smell the odor? If you smell it, how intense it is and concentrated and so forth. But we stay in the realm of that sensory area.
No, and I understand that, I just wa, I just didn't know if there was additional odor that needed to be considered because of the compost and whatever, so that's, I just wanted that.
Just the odor aspect of the compost, not bacteria coming out.
Exactly, exactly, that, that's not, not us.
Ma'am chair, woman, um, just to be clear, it's not composting, it's anaerobic digestion in sealed containers, um, it's a, it's a discussion we've even had with, um, with the D E P, uh, because we're, we believe it's best practice, uh, but it, it's not outdoor composting, just, just in case anybody was concerned about that.
Oh, no, okay, I'm sorry, if I was, I'm not there. Alright, we're gonna, we're gonna, thank you so much. Thank you for the drive, thank you very much. So we're going to noise?
Ned, do you have an, an noise person here you'd like to present?
Uh, yes, we do.
Okay. Yeah, so Patrick, I think we should have the noise person make the presentation of.
Supplement new information. So, so if I could introduce, um, so this, this is for, for noise, I'm sorry.
Yes, noise. So I'd like to present Jim Barnes, uh, from Ascentech, uh, who, um, liked the odor mitigation plan we've, uh, submitted, um, just recently, I believe this, this one was from yesterday, um, the noise mitigation plan, uh, that's what he'll be referring to.
Good evening. Well, uh, Dan, Jim Barnes, um, community noise person. I've dealt primarily over my career in community noise issues, especially with industry. Uh, been asked to, um, advise the team on this project, and I just would like to go through the different steps that we go through and, and just, um, highlight the, the overall process that we use in analyzing and advising our clients in this regard. Uh, in environmental noise modeling, uh, we have several different steps. The first thing we need to do is, is to be able, uh, come up with an overall noise model where we understand the source, the path, and the receptor. Uh, we'll be using a, uh, standard computer model, it's called Catna slash A, it's built on a international standard. There are several other commercial, um, sound models too that are used, and that are all based on this type of standard and some other standards as well. based on this type of standard and some other standards as well. And it's been used successfully for the, over ten years, and was able to give us predicted results based on types of input. Obviously, you need to have useful input. We highlight here the source strength, basically how, how much sound is being produced by a particular source, and in this case, the type of sources. One, ventilation systems, we talk about air movement inside, motors associated with that, as well as a cogeneration plant that is being proposed for this project. Cogeneration plant uses equipment that is used at many other sites. You go to a local hospital, maybe quite possible the cooling and heating plant, the power plant there, we use the same type of equipment. So we will count on the vendors to be able to provide us information on the, on that equipment, how much sound they actually produce. Then we'll also be able to go out and, and understand, characterize the overall sound environments, where the nearest receptors are, primarily the residences are, team the nearest noise receptors, no sensitive receptors. Obviously, school, churches, hospitals, those are also considered typical noise sensitive receptors as well. So identify those, and develop a overall ambient sound survey that will out-characterize that. Elements in the sound survey, typically it's a hybrid where we use continuous monitors will be placed out and be measuring the sound during the day and the nighttime, and typically over three days to a week or so over a period of representative weather conditions. And we also supplement that with handheld measurements. I just think it's very important for an experienced acoustician to be able to go out and understand what is the sound environment. The mass pipe we're hearing is a Route 20, is it some other industrial sources in the area? This all helps give us some flavor as to what are the overall sound levels and what are the sound sources in the area. With that, we will come up with a design criteria, and in discussion with, with the projects, with Mass DEP, and in looking at any town regulations that you have, we'll come up with a design criteria. We may have a set of design goals, and then perhaps limits as well, those can be different. And then we compare the predicted levels that we had from our model to the design criteria, and if we, if we are under the design goals, if we need it, all's fine, nothing else is necessary. Typically, one needs to design other things, much like when you have an automobile, you put a muffler on it. Well, in the Cogen plant, we're certainly going to be planning and having a muffler on some of the sources, and may need to enclose some different type of equipment. So acousticians have all sorts of different types of mitigation measures that they would use. Obviously, we would design it so that it would be most cost-effective and useful. The overall goal is, in this whole process, is to come up with a plant that is a good acoustic neighbor, not, you know, being a cause for community annoyance complaints. Post-construction testing and validation, sort of a final, where in this process, we would go out and take measurements once the equipment is started up, and compare that to what our predictions are and the overall design criteria. And in some cases, there may be a need to do some retrofits, maybe some adjustments that are needed, and we try to allow for that within the design process as well. So those are the different steps that we have, and they're ones that are used for any kind of project, not just a cannabis project, but many other industrial tech projects that we work on. So, with that.
Sure. We have Willis tonight. Chris Manch, who is with H and N, H is our peer reviewer for noise. Many of you may be familiar with Chris, he assisted the board in the review of the 508 border cross tracks, so I was familiar with the town and is really qualified in this field. Chris?
Thank you. Thank you, Jim, for your outline. I've had an opportunity to read the report that was provided to me yesterday by VanderWiel Power Group and Ascentec. Just to give you a little background, I had reviewed about three weeks ago a initial plan for this proposal, and it gave an outline of the types of noise solutions that the proponent was proposing. And it was, it was a nice outline, and they said, we're going to take care of the noise problems with using best practices and mufflers, et cetera. But the town asked me to put together a memo, review that, and put together a memo that would address, you know, any concerns that I might have and give some thoughts, and I've done this for the town before, the 508 facility, and so I made some recommendations in a fairly brief memo, but I targeted, you know, the Mass DEP noise requirements, because that's, it's a requirement that the facility meet those. And I will say that the Mass DEP noise criteria, it's a policy that's implemented under a set of regulations, and I will say that it is, it is quite good, considering statewide policies and considering that it was first, first implemented in 1972 without many updates. It was actually pretty well thought out, and is, is thought to be quite good at predicting community annoyance and complaints about noise intrusion. And what it requires is that the facility not generate sound levels that are, not increase the background sound levels by more than 10 decibels, and that it not create a, what's called a pure tone condition, so that you wouldn't hear any whines or any hums from the facility. And while a increase in 10 decibels is generally noticeable, more than that is considered to be rather intrusive. And in my experience, and I think in Mr. Barnes' experience as well, in dealing with noise, noise issues over the last forty years, I think for both of us, we found that in many cases, a 10 decibel increase is considered to be a little bit much for a community to tolerate, and that if a developer, a proponent can keep their increases to below about five decibels of an increase, then that is generally thought to be, you know, moderately acceptable, particularly if there's no pure tone, no tonal quality to the sound, it's just a broadband sound like traffic noise would be. And it requires, it requires some effort on the part of a proponent of such a large facility and some money to achieve such sound levels, because they're, they're putting in some large equipment, they're putting in a lot of fans, they're putting in, the Cogen plant has a lot of machinery, and machinery makes, makes noise. But, but the, the instruments for reducing the noise and the kind of mufflers that are available, the kind of enclosures that have been built for, you know, diesel, for example, diesel emergency generators that are put near hospitals and things like that, they're very effective at reducing the noise by, created by these machines, and mufflers on fans can be very effective. They cost money, and they have some effect on the fan's performance, and so it needs to be, needs to be incorporated. In any, in any case, the, the, Ascentec and VanderWiel put together a memo that, I will say, addresses just about all of the concerns that I had and the points that I made in my, in my memorandum, which included, you know, pre, pre-monitoring of existing conditions in a number of locations over a long period of time to establish the background, comparisons to DEP requirements, and then post-construction monitoring to ensure compliance. But one of the things that I incorporated in my recommendation was that the, that the operator make a, make a commitment to not more than a five-decibel increase in the community, because I think that that's, would be very protective of the neighborhood, and I think it's achievable. It'll take, like I said, it'll take some, it'll take some, some money to do it, but, you know, what they're proposing is a large facility that presumably is going to make some money, given this, what I've heard about the number of purchasers that have been to the local shops in the last week. So I, I feel that it's certainly doable, and I'm sure that, Ascentec is a highly qualified firm, I'm sure that they can advise the, the proponent and to effective measures. So I think that's a, that's a commitment. I'd like to establish that as a performance standard, as Mr. Verbrauski had mentioned earlier, that if we can establish, I think for, for noise, it's measurable, it's, it's quantifiable, and, and the relationship of what we hear and what we measure with our instruments is very good. It's, it's not quite as tricky as the odor issue, I don't think. In fact, I'm quite sure it isn't as tricky in that regard. But I feel that they've gone a long way to address the points that I raised, and I feel that the performance standard of no more than a five-decibel increase is not an unreasonable request to make, and I would like to see, in the post-construction testing, I would also like to recommend that the town see to it that they're able to comply with, with that, even if they, we find that they do exceed, exceed it. I'll also point out that while we do have Route 20 in the neighborhood, and Mr. Barnes has experience with these kinds of issues as well, we know that between the hours of about midnight and maybe 4:00 AM, it gets very quiet. You know, roadways really lose their traffic, and the background sound levels really do drop in communities. And so if this, if the operators of the facility are planning to operate their facility, you know, as, as the memorandum, or as the report suggests, they're going to do a test or the modeling analysis as they had proposed would be representing a worst-case scenario when all equipment operates simultaneously at full load. If, if that condition can be compared to the background sound level at three in the morning and not be more than a five-decibel increase, I think everyone is going to be in good shape. If they choose to find that it difficult, be difficult to meet that in those wee hours of the morning, then perhaps a permit that would allow them to operate during more normal business hours or fewer hours of the day may be a remedy for, for the very quietest periods of the, of the day. So those are some thoughts anyway, based on what I've read and heard, and I don't know if anybody has any questions for us in the board.
Do we have any questions?
Yeah, I got a question. Have you guys done the preliminary sound study to get the ambient sound in the neighborhood yet?
We have not. We're developing a plan that will be reviewed with Mass DEP before we perform it.
Is there any timeline on that?
I would think we're going to next, or least.
Can I get back to you with the dates?
Well, you know, we're on a timeline, just.
We, we would propose to have some modeling.
Yeah.
I don't think we would be out in the field doing the testing and having the numbers back, but we would have a proposal for what that modeling would look like. We would have, just like we're going to have the two odor experts coordinate, we would ask the two noise experts to coordinate, confirm that the modeling that they would like to see is consistent with each other, kind of the same, you know, the three points that council wants to see as far as an O and M plan, a performance standard, same coordination, same reporting back. Whether the testing would get, would be done by that date, most likely not, but knowing what the standard is, and I, I do think noise is a little bit easier than odor, and that you have a definitive method of testing, and you have an actual standard.
Yep.
So I think this also does need to go to DEP.
All right.
So whatever, whatever modeling they do for the testing, we could go to DEP, and they could make it more stringent, they could ask for additional modeling. So that would set the baseline minimum that we would agree to.
And the reason I ask is because, Chris, your memorandum that you did dated November 5th, you mentioned that they should develop a preliminary noise, noise study, it could, should be conducted before the town gets final approval for the project.
And, and the reason I, I said that was because I was concerned that they might not design the facility to, to be, to be quiet enough if we find out that they want to operate 24/7, and, and they're surprised by how quiet it happens to be in the wee hours of the morning. Because with, without the measurements during quiet nights when it's calm and, and quiet, you won't really know how far you have to go down with the noise levels from the plant in your modeling. So I think it's a little bit of a moving target for you to do the modeling without having the, the background sound levels, but, but you can certainly get a start at it, and.
Quick question. Do you know if there was a background sound study done on 508?
Yes.
So I do think if we have the data from the middle of the night, that that might actually be.
Different area.
Okay, I was just asking the question of whether or not there might be some data that could be.
It might be partially applicable to part of the homes that were really far from the mass turnpike, because it was a large site, and the surrounding area was miles. So it's possible, but, and that might give you a hint as to what the backgrounds are, background sound levels are like. Except for that.
Wait, wait, just a wait. We, we want it, we want it done before we make a decision. So just hurry that up, please.
We need a lot of.
You want the plan done, or you want the actual noise testing?
The noise test, the pre-testing done, please.
The ambient.
Does this have to get a permit from DEP too, Chris?
No, they don't actually request a permit, but I've heard that they plan to discuss their, the measurement plan with DEP and their, their design goals with DEP in order to establish where they're headed, and, and I think that's absolutely prudent. It would be, it would be good if, if that could happen maybe before the town approves as well.
So they're doing that as a precaution so that they don't exceed the 10 dB standard later?
Well, as part of it, but the other part of it is, is the DEP will have an opinion about the inappropriate design goal, whether it be, you know, five decibels above or maybe even lower or, or higher, I don't know. I'm, my, my hunch, my experience and my hush tells me that they, they might ask for something five or less, and, and I think if they, if they do, then that would be, I think, a worthwhile thing for the, for the town. But it would be nice, I think, to have the DEP's feedback.
Yeah.
And, and I think the proponent would, would be well-served to have the background sound level information in hand, along with the modeling that Mr. Barnes will do to, now see, one of the issues is they're not complete with their design yet, they don't know what all the machines are yet, so that, that modeling part is, is going to be tricky to finish.
Yeah.
Before all this permitting is done, but if Mr. Barnes can convince them that with good silencers, he can, he can meet this criteria, and then, and then he's a very qualified engineer, I, I don't, I wouldn't doubt it.
So the request is the ambient background tests.
Yep.
Based on a plan that the two engineers agreed to be completed and presented to the board before a final determination.
I'd agree.
Chris, does seasonal conditions affect that baseline ambient noise level? I mean, we're coming up on winter now, snow on the ground, no leaves on the trees, is that a good prediction, what it'll be all season long, or is that you are all year long?
I think the wintertime is, is a good time to measure. We won't be facing crickets and tree frogs, which do affect the sound levels. They can be addressed, as I mentioned in my memorandum, but, but ideally, I think this is a good time of year. It, it can be windy, but it also, there will be nights when it will be calm, and days that will be moderately calm, and I think that's, so you need a few days where it's calm, it's not too windy, and it's not raining, and you get a few of those, and that's why Mr. Barnes is proposing a seven-day measurement program, so they do get at least a day or two with good, with good conditions where they can say, all right, this is, this is how quiet it gets, because it's, it's those levels that the DEP will want to see met as their criteria, and they don't want to take a windy night and call that the background. and they, they don't want to take a windy night and call that the background.
Do we have additional board questions?
Yep.
Do we have questions from the public?
Yeah, I do. I, I think, as, as far as trying to include what happened, whether you love 508 or didn't love 508, or whatever that is, that was still, that whole operation was going to be a dozen events, maybe half a dozen events a year, not a 24/7 operation. So, it's a little different. It's not apples and apples to certainly compare that. As far as Mr. Barnes, and, and you sounded, you made a couple of comments, where you said that they, there are certain levels that, that can be met, but everything needs to be cost-effective, and you actually made a comment that you, what you could add things later, I believe is kind of what you said, if, if you weren't going to meet that? That raised a question with me, why wouldn't, have they asked you to do the bronze silver or gold levels here?
So, let me, let me, what he said was, we plan to be a good acoustic neighbor, we will, we do have an overall goal, we plan to comply with that goal, but we always do also do post-retrofit testing, and if we need to make any adjustments afterwards, we always do. He didn't say, we're not going to spend the money and we can add things later if people complain. So, you know, if we need to listen and, and watch the tape back, we can. But what he did say is, we do do post-construction testing, and would retrofit or adjust if there ended up being an issue.
And, and I, and maybe this is more for, for our sound engineers, people need to understand that, that if it's, if it's, if you have a, a decibel rating of 50 dB, five isn't 10% larger, that there's a curve there. It, it's almost like, if I understand dB ratings correctly, it's five, a 5% decibel rating is four times louder than 50.
No, no. A five, a five decibel increase in sound level is generally heard by, in, in a community as, as noticeable, but not, not a, a great deal of, of sound level increase. Three decibels of, of increase of the same kind of sound in a community setting is kind of at the borderline of whether it's noticeable or not, and less than that is generally not noticeable, if it's the same kind of sound. A 10 decibel increase would be generally heard of the same kind of sound again, would be generally heard as twice, about twice as loud, and 20 decibel increase would be heard as maybe four times as loud. So, you can see where I'm getting it, if you have a 10 or more decibel increase, it's going to be very noticeable, whereas five or less is generally at the borderline, you know, some people won't notice it, some people would, it's, and right at five, in a community setting is generally thought as to be, yeah, it's, it's noticeable.
But, in a, in a residential neighborhood, not an industrial neighborhood, you're going to hear rumblings, you're, you're, the tone is going to be deep, rumbling diesel locomotive engines, pretty much, is, if they're going to put in two nine-megawatt generators, those are big, that's, that's, that tone of that sound is a rumbling, not...
Well, there's, there's a, you want, you should understand that there's a pure tone requirement on the part of, in, in the DEP regulations, in their policy, where the, the existing background sound shape is compared with the sound, the shape of the sound, low, low frequencies, low rumblings, the middles, and then the high sounds, like the birds and the crickets. That shape is, is, is compared, and, and if, if there's a, if there's a bump in the shape due to a tone from some fan that's making, you know, excess sound and whining, or, or a rumble from a, a diesel engine that, that is shaking, that's, that's going to stick up in this sound spectrum shape, and it would cause there to be a pure tone violation, according to the way the DEP would see that. So, so that's one thing that, that would mitigate any, any concerns in that area. It, it would be possible that there would be some more, let's say, some more low-frequency sound from the plant, the, the lower, lower pitches, that might increase more than the five decibels, as compared with the middle frequency sound. And I would like to see their, and, and Mr. Barnes did say that they would be doing one-third or frequency band analysis, so I would like to see what the expected future frequency spectrum shape of, of the, when this, the operation is in full, within full power, and as they were talking about. And that, if we can, if we could see that, if I could see that, as, in comparison to the existing background spectrum, that would give, give me a sense as to whether I thought the town was being protected from, you know, too much rumbling sound. Because, because the, I should say that the, the five decibel increase, the 10 decibel increase that I was talking about, and that the DEP addresses is, is the so-called A-weighted sound level, and that A-weighted sound level focuses really on the middle frequencies where our voice is heard, and the higher frequencies where our ears are particularly sensitive, and it kind of de-emphasizes the low-frequency sounds where we, people generally aren't as, aren't as bothered by the low-frequency sounds, it doesn't interfere with our speech, and our ears aren't quite as sensitive in that area. So, that's one of the reasons the A-weighting curve is used for pretty much all noise regulations.
But, but that can, in modern-day technology, that can be set into a design criteria, not, 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 let's, let's do it and figure it out after the fact, right? It can all be designed upfront, right?
And one thing about big mufflers, though, is that they can be very good at, at reducing low-frequency sound. I mean, you know how good car mufflers are, when you take a car muffler off?
Am I correct in assuming in the statement that the Mass DEP regulates, so if the ambient sound is at whatever it is, if they cannot go above 10 without some, if someone issues a complaint, they could actually be shut down for going over 10? And that area has a very wide range of noise. During the middle of the day, it is extremely loud, in the middle of the night, it gets much quieter, although it's still a little loud. Are the sound testing's going to be at various times throughout the day, or is it just going to be at a certain, only because it is so varied? And in the summertime, I'm actually glad it's winter, but in the summertime, if you stand there, you'll hear the tractor trailers and the motorcycles go by, and it's probably over the 10 decibels, but that's neither here nor there. But is that true, that the Mass DEP can actually shut them down if they break the rules? Not if they, if they follow them, great, but if they break them, aren't there systems in place that can shut that, or, and make them change those, put mufflers if you will?
Yeah, they, they can enforce, they can enforce their, their noise policy, and they've shut, and they've shut facilities down, or force them to change their operational characteristics. For example, they could, they could require them to not operate in the middle of the night, if that was the time when they, the only time that they found violations, because the background sound levels are so low at night.
Right.
That's why I mentioned that earlier. It could be that during the day, you know, people can't even hear it, you know, because of the traffic.
Right.
Yeah. Although some of the homes are not right on Route 20, as, as you all know, where you live, so your, your background sounds there, away from Route 20, are going to be quiet, for sure.
Heidi, I want to thank the board for doing these hearings in the light of day and letting all the citizens listen to, you know, the plans and understand what's, what's coming up the pipe. And then I just have a quick question for you. The, the farm is actually about, I don't know, 50 to 75 feet above a lot of the properties? There's like 60 residential properties that actually abut it. So, how does altitude affect sound? Does it make you go further? Is there higher than that?
Well, it all really depends mostly on the lines of sight, as we say, you know, between the sound source and the, and the receiver, or the, the listener. And one thing that can be an advantage of, of an elevated building above the surrounding receivers, is if, if the, for example, if the machinery were to be put sort of near the middle of the building, and the edges of the building were, did not have machinery on them, then the sound path from the machinery to the homes would have to go over the edge of the building and lose some sound energies, we call it the barrier effect. Whereas if the machinery is all right at the edge of the building, then you have more of a direct, direct path. But Mr. Barnes knows all about this stuff, and would be able to advise them in this manner. Another possibility is using, you know, walls around the machinery, if, if they happen to be near the edge of the building, as another way to reduce the noise, if the mufflers aren't quite sufficient, for example. So, there's a, a number of solutions that, that can be, that can be brought about.
I'm Chairman Gerard Russell, 63-year-old Worcester Road. I'm just curious about if the engineering is not as successful as the town would like in terms of limiting noise that's allowed by the DEP or the Board of Health, would there be exterior potential for, let's say, you, you're driving down interstate highways, and you see these rather unsightly walls? I'm wondering if that would be something that would be in their toolhouse to, to put up, and if, if they did, where, have they considered this? Where would they go? Would they go next to the buildings? Would they be next to the access road, the property line? Just wonder, any of this has been considered?
I, I think in writing a permit, just from my perspective, well, I, I once had an engineering firm work for me in a town that will remain nameless, and it was a simple detention pond, and they had to put it together to make sure that it would carry the water in a hundred-year storm. Well, we had a bad storm that October weekend, once it was in the ground, and it was a trout pond, and, you know, that's not what we're talking about here. I don't want to end up with noise in excess of a standard that we've pretty much agreed upon, so that we can dig it out later and, and try to retrofit. I want the engineers to come up with something that will work, and I want them to stick their reputations on it, so that we don't have a trout pond of noise. It's the same analysis, it's just a simpler example. So, I'm, I know Chris Menj, because I've worked with him on a number of different cases over the years, and I consider him to be my go-to acoustical engineer, and he tells me that the counterpart he has on the other side is equally as good. I'm confident these gentlemen can come up with something that will work, not something that we're going to have to worry about retrofitting five years in the future. But the goal should be, I think we've hit all the hot points, the goal should be, is it going to be designed for the dead-end night, when there's obviously a lower ambient, and is the standard going to hold at 5 dBs above that ambient, even in the dead-end night, if they're operating at that point in time? If they design to that, we shouldn't end up with a trout pond.
Well, I'd agree with you, I'm just wondering about the potential, and if these things have been considered, that's all.
Yeah, but, you know, when it's, in standard design, when you're talking to a civil engineer about doing a, a stormwater management system, you don't expect that to happen, that, that question never comes up.
Well, with all due respect, Ed, when they build the interstates, they can expect the, the intrusion of sound on the properties.
Yeah, that's true, too. So, I, let's hear what they have to say, then we'll, then we'll mitigate around the edges.
Laurie Giedman, Oscar Booth, both the sound expert and the odor expert urged you to have the full plan attached to the permit. Could someone just summarize the timing, because I've heard people say extensions and deadlines? Could you just briefly give us a timeline? Do you think we have an answer?
I talked with council for the applicant today, and we will probably not have the meeting on the 4th. For one thing, I'm out of town, do, I, I have another meeting that night in another town. And given the amount of work that has to be done, it's a week away. So, we're talking about finding a date, either the 11th or the 13th, I think have come up as a possible next meeting date.
And that would be the deadline, but from what I understand, if it's not fixed by a certain date?
No.
You don't vote on it, and it's automatically...
Well, we, we would then see where we are on the 11th, but it, it's in all likelihood going to be another board. The board currently has a meeting scheduled for January 2nd, and I suggested that we meet during the Christmas week, but people are, you know, they have families as well as I do, and I...
So, it won't be automatically...
No, 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 I think we're working cooperatively in that, in that way, and I, I believe that the last date we would have a public hearing would be the 2nd of January, at which the board would have a written decision in front of it, with all of these things stapled to the back, as I've been saying.
If I could ask Attorney Rosen, are you asking for an extension? Because I'm, I'm with the understanding that we have to act on this application by December 4th, file a decision with the town clerk, so unless, otherwise...
I, I will confirm on the record right now, we are extended through December 14th, and that Mark and I may get back to you with a further extension beyond that.
Yeah, and it's, the board will have to caucus about whether the 11th works for you. I know that council is available for the applicant, and I am as well that night. The only other night I have that week is the 13th, I'm not sure if you're even available.
Let me take a quick...
So, Bill was just going to say, if it's not agreed extension, which now we have the intention of an extension, can we have that written in into the third week in January to cover us? Because it sounds like you need that extension, legally.
Get this soil first, and then we can talk about extension after, is that...
Yes.
Let's get moving, and see where we are.
I'm Chairman, I kind of got off track a little with that question from the noise. That's okay. So, I have a question about the noise. So, the noise study that you're going to do is basically on the facility, correct? So, there's going to be a lot of noise, because I think we are under the understanding that there's going to be four shifts at this facility, so people are going to be coming in off the road, depending on, the, the entrance for this facility hasn't been determined yet either, as far as I can tell, but if it turns out that it was on the local road, now you're going to have a lot of traffic at all hours of the night for shift change, as well as for, you know, bringing in materials and trucking and all that kind of stuff. So, are you going to do a noise study for that? Because obviously, I mean, if you live on that street, and there's a big truck coming with a delivery of whatever, you know, that, that, that's going to be, you know, quite a nuisance. So, where, where would the board be on that? Would, would there be a moratorium until the no deliveries can come into this facility on the local roads, after 11 o'clock at night, and not until 8 o'clock in the morning? You know what I mean? Or is this, or are we going to do a noise study of, of that? Because right now, I'm pretty sure there's not a whole lot of traffic, you guys on that road, there's probably not a, a whole lot of traffic, certainly not truck traffic in the middle of the night. Because basically, you know, these guys are running 20% on an operation, so you're going to have, I mean, their claim is 300 employees, right? So, that's 75 employees per shift, per se. Based on those numbers, you're going to have 75 employees leaving that facility and coming in, that's 150, at different times in the middle of the night. So, we all know that car traffic generates, you know, noise, and volumes of cars makes more noise. So, is there going to be a study done to make sure that that noise on the roads for, is, is, is going to be acceptable and not above this, this five-decibel level? So, seems to me you need two studies, one for the facility, and then one for the roads. And that way, you know, in the middle of the night, if it turns out that this facility is generating more noise with this traffic coming in, that's another reason to shut them down.
Well, to be honest, traffic noise is not regulated under the Massachusetts DEP, and, and what I would recommend is that the traffic study address times of day, and that, that the traffic would be, and, and I would, I would suggest that the, the board consider, you know, traffic, appropriate traffic routes, particularly at the night, particularly during the night, for both cars and trucks.
So, if, if the insurance agent forgives me...
Mark.
So, is it possible that the board put a stipulation, again, in, in the agreement or approval, if they have to get it, that they will give moratorium on any deliveries after hours, maybe from 11 to 7:00? So, that the truck's on the road there?
I'd, I'd have to talk to our planning, to the board's consultant, Jennifer Conley, but that's a standard condition, in terms of truck delivery times. If you had a, if you have a Dunkin' Donuts, you, you don't bring the deliveries in at 10 o'clock in the morning, you, you do it early hour. I just did a, a cafe in downtown Concord, and you got to get in and out of there before 7:00 o'clock, because they don't want your truck parked in the street during the commuter hour.
Okay, but those, here's the thing, those are not residential...
I get it, but the, those kinds of conditions are all the time, so it's not unusual at all. I just don't know what the right condition is, and Jennifer may be able to help in that.
Well, I'm pretty sure the right condition would be, you know, no deliveries between 11 and 7:00 AM, that way the dealers are not going to be disturbed.
It sounds reasonable to me, I took a note.
Threat more 15 hammer up both. So, all this sounds good, the noise thing and the smell thing, if, if none of it works, and I, maybe this is really a question, if, if none of it works, what's our recourse? Do I sue the board? Do I sue the town?
No, the town's not actionable, but the tort claims that, that gives the town immunity from that kind of litigation. If the town's board has exercised reasonable prudence and diligence, and wasn't reckless or wanton in its decision-making, the town, the board is immune from that.
The board would, would screw.
Well, the board is trying to do the best job...
I agree, I think they're doing a great job, but I'm just saying, I, I...
I'm just saying, I read lots of documentation, and these same boards did all this work in California, Oregon, Washington, Colorado, and it really doesn't seem like it's working out great.
Well, who break the mold?
I don't know.
Sure.
I realize we're not talking traffic, and I apologize. But on the flip side, I realize no one wants trucks coming in, unless you, in the middle of the night. But wouldn't it be safer to have these great big tractor trailers coming in in the middle of the night instead of during school bus time, commute time, bath after, kid time? And again, I know it's a little bit noisier, but from a safety standpoint, can the traffic study look into that as well? What works for other industrial facilities that are in residential neighborhoods? Because there's got to be some somewhere that have figured this out.
Are we Jennifer questioning?
Yeah, exactly.
And we are still hoping for move 20 possibilities?
Yes.
And that'll solve all these problems?
Absolutely.
And make everybody happy, so.
The simple answer to that, at least, is probably, if this facility were going into an industrial park, where people don't sleep at night and there aren't 60 homes around it, none of us would be in this room right now. But it's not. It's going into a residential neighborhood with improper zoning.
All right. Any other questions?
I'm confused. What is the new deadline for the planning board to render a decision? There's no...
The deadline is the same right now.
December 4th?
But we, by the end of this meeting, we have to decide. So we all will know, we'll all be enlightened.
Before the meeting?
Before, as soon as we get through all these facts.
We may not meet your deadlines.
Yeah. We've got 20 minutes.
We've got 20 minutes.
Christine Grove, are you wrote? On setting up the monitors to get the baseline where we're at for sound now, who selects the locations? And can I have my backyard tested?
I think Mr. Barnes and I will confer on those locations. And yes, please give us your name and address. I can't guarantee you that we will choose your house, but we will try to choose appropriate locations that are representative of your neighborhood. And as long as you don't have a dog, a dog that barks at night.
I live on Martin Station Road. We have one like in the middle of Martin Station Road as well, because I hear noise from the archivaries. We do singing up there. So I'm going to hear all this rumbling at my house as well. So something on Martin Station would be appreciated as well.
Pass your information along to Mr. Scanlon here.
Can I ask anyone who's going to submit an address, Mr. Scanlon, please do so tomorrow so the engineers can get laid out? Because if we want to get it done within the next two weeks, we really need to...
Noon deadline to Mr. Scanlon tomorrow, if you want your house to be a candidate for measurement. We don't want to lose the time. The weather's actually forecast to be decent, so.
It's not detour signs on Old Wester Road. Are they doing the digging for the water pipes right now? So how are we going to measure Indian sound if they're doing a construction project?
They're at the beginning of Old Wester Road right now, aren't they?
Yeah, they're detouring it. You can't go on it. Through traffic is not allowed.
I saw the big signs there.
The sign's there, but you can get through.
Well, you can, but they're not allowing you on the other end. They have police detail redirecting you.
Right.
But what I'm saying, if you're doing construction, they're making noise, you're not going to get an ambient reading.
Yeah, because there's nobody up there. Yeah, they can stop while we test.
They can just stop while they're testing.
Well, the testing's going to be seven days.
Their tests are already done. Well, they won't, they're not working on the boat in the middle of the night. And that's the most, that's the sound that we're worried about the most. So, I mean, maybe they are, but...
No, they're not.
No, they won't be working at night yet. If the facility is going to operate full tilt in the middle of the night, that's the time that our criteria is really going to apply.
Noise wise, can they have brand and model number of power generator?
We have a sample that we're picking.
There's examples.
So you don't have model with list all, and you're doing a bit, expert, give us some review of sound. You give us software model for...
That's the next step. We're not there yet.
No requirement, all right, people.
I just have one last question. So when this, what part of the process, they're taking 30, about 30 feet down off of the top, so that everything's going to actually be lower, does that affect any of the testing that's being done or...
The testing that would be done in the next couple of weeks? I don't think so.
Which shouldn't affect anything?
Unless there's a lot of shielding provided by the current ground to, no, I mean, it's the current background. I don't think so. I mean, we should look at the plan and see if we think there might be something.
I just, I just didn't know that. If it means a difference.
I don't think it'll make a dramatic difference, no.
You guys are professional.
But we'll take that into account. And that's one thing we'll do, develop and, and, on the study, think about.
Okay, are we, good, we have more questions, can we move on to soil?
Yeah, absolutely. You're willing to say it.
We have Frank Lilly from Old West Subs, who is the team's soil scientist. And we have Mark Richards from Tine Bond, who is the town's peer review person. So I think we can have a good dialogue about what's going on with soils. And Anne, do you want to have Franco first?
Yes, okay, please. Yeah, just an update, a summary. In the last one, we went out and collected 20 new locations, 10 from the cut areas, 10 from the fill areas. We analyzed it for arsenic metals, standard metals. Had provided those results to Mark Richards, the LSP of the town. He requested we do additional analysis for what we call repra pesticides. That was done, and all those results were provided to Mark. Well, the arsenic was provided about a week ago. The pesticide results were provided yesterday. And we've conferred on the phone a couple of times. The results have not changed, in my opinion, that this project is doable with respect to, as long as we include a good soil management plan, dust control, find the levels to be low. They are present, but it really looks like one of the less impacted orchards that I've worked on.
All right. So Frank and I actually had some very good discussions over the, since we got involved. Early on, we produced a summary letter, and it predated some of the information that Frank just went over in terms of additional soil information. So the approach we look at in projects like this is you limit exposure based on known conditions. So most of the issues on the property can be contained and left on the property. So when you, if you're in an environment to the property, there's really no risk to soil issues that may exist. So what we've asked Goldar and the proponent to produce is a soil management plan that outlines how soil will be moved around the property. Frank and I had some very good discussion that the base information we do have, it's very doable to control risk. And as Frank did say, the levels here are very low. There is an isolated area of the property, I think the older section of the orchard where levels are a bit higher, but in comparison to other orchards, it is still low. So because there is a significant soil cut occurring, there's an opportunity to determine where that soil is going to be reused on site. So we talked about if you have low level impacted soils, that that be placed in deeper fills, and then the final soil layer will be cleaner soil. So there's an opportunity to present a plan, which we don't have yet, they will need to prepare, which will present how that soil will be moved around. There will be issues related to construction impacts. That's when we're most concerned in terms of dust. When materials are excavated, we'll be looking for a dust monitoring plant in terms of making sure near-term construction dust is left within the construction zone. There'll be additional sampling required in terms of stockpiled material that may be used on site as a final cover layer, to make sure we know exactly what's going down and that it's safe. The good opportunity here with a project like this, where you have levels that are more concentrated on the surface of the property, and when you're doing a mass excavation, you can take into account the dilution component where the soils are getting mixed and then placed back on site. That will lower concentrations, reduce exposure, and reduce risk. So again, those are going to be components that we'll look for the proponent to summarize in their management plan that we would review. The good side about the project is you have the majority of the orchard being covered by a building. So that will cover a lot of material. The part we're worried about and concerned that we want to see in their plan is soil that will be reused will be on the perimeter of the property on the slopes. So we want to make sure there, again, you know what's going on the slope, and that there are control measures to prevent erosion and to get the slopes vegetated, to prevent things from flowing off property. So we're going to be very concerned and focused on the residential properties that directly above the orchard. The wetland area also, the filling will go right up to the edge of wetland. So we want to make sure the wetland areas can be protected. And that, the best thing the proponent can propose is the final course of backfill on the property on the slopes will be the cleanest material, whether that's from an off-site loam source, or if it's material that they preferentially identify on site from deeper cuts that will go as one of the final soil layers being the cleanest. So that's the big picture summary. I can take questions if anyone has any.
Does the board...
Oh, sorry, discussion.
Does the board have a question?
One question. Based upon the testing levels of, which is say the topsoil, based upon those lows, are any of them allowed? Would you recommend any of them be allowed to leave the site?
Allowed to leave the site unrestricted.
Correct.
There are levels that would be allowed to leave unrestricted. There is a section, and I can show people, I have a large plan of what we can look at. I know it's hard to see, but on the eastern edge of the orchard is the older section. That's where we found more of the elevated pesticides, or where Goldar found elevated pesticides. We want to make sure there's a focus on that material in terms of understanding if that section of property has the potential for high to higher concentrations, where is that material going to be reused on the property? So a bit more of a focused discussion. And if materials need to leave the site, and understanding what soil may leave the property. My understanding is it's going to be a balanced site, cut-fill balance. So they're going to be looking to try to manage everything on site, which is good. So then you have an opportunity, again, to kind of flip things around. Your top layer becomes your bottom layer when you're filling the property. That can be a very good thing in terms of long-term exposure risk. But again, as Frank did say, and I do concur with the levels here are very much on the low side, and the risk here can be managed very...
Is there, is there any concern of that arsenic getting back into the water tables? It's very deeper underneath the water.
Heavy metals are not generally mobile, so I'm not concerned about these migrating into water.
All right, I'll open it up.
Yeah, just one more question. I guess it might be part of the condition. Would it make sense as a condition to have representative from our environmental company on site, or the construction manager, that things are followed? Is that something that...
Yeah, I think, like any plan, similar to the noise and odor discussions, things need to be implemented correctly and monitored. So there, you know, there may be opportunities to have some checks and balances of activities that are occurring during construction, particularly things that could migrate off-site. So dust monitoring, sampling materials that may remain at the surface to understand what may be left. Yes.
And your counterpart is an LSP as well?
I am an LSP.
Oh, is your counterpart?
Oh, yes, he's an LSP.
So can I ask a question?
Yes.
So on page three of your memo from earlier this month, you said our recommendation is that the developer prepares a comprehensive soil sampling program. I get it. Based on the sampling results, you do a risk evaluation. Okay. And then you come up with a final soil management plan.
Yes.
And what is the timetable for that?
They could, depending on where they are with their site design, they could prepare a soil management plan now, which would have kind of those best practices of how you're going to manage things. It'll have a technical component in terms of discussing risk based on concentration. So that can be prepared in a fairly short period of time.
A fairly short period of time, 30 days?
I think so. I'm speaking for the proponent, but...
That would be, that would be my goal.
Right.
Because I don't want to delegate this down the road to the later approval of you. Not that I don't trust you, but the case law suggests that I shouldn't be doing that. So if I can get that staple to the back of the permit, that's my goal.
Yep. I think it's achievable.
Okay.
If when they're digging 30 feet down to make the plateau, they hit ledge, are they going to blast? That will send dust everywhere. What's the plan if you hit rock?
I don't know the geology at depth. Fellas may.
We have done geotechnical exploration without it in front of me. I don't actually know there's any ledge encountered at the top of the plateau. Oh, sorry, apologize. We did have geotechnical investigation done on site. They don't have it in front of me, I apologize. To the best of my recollection, we did not encounter any ledge, I think in any of the pools, actually. They're, through some soil testing, there's definitely some boulders and boulders, but it's nothing that isn't loose. I don't anticipate it blasting at this point.
Okay. That was, just so I understand, just so I understand, it's a 30-foot cut off the top of that hill?
Yeah.
30 feet down. And during that process, who monitors where they're putting the bad soil? There is going to be somebody that, a separate party though, sort of involved that aren't going to cover it here.
So their management plan will presumably talk about the different layers of material they're going to generate. And then we're more concerned about the shallow soil and where that will go.
So if you're giving the 30 days to come up with soil management plan, that we all, I believe Ed requested at the first soil meeting. That means that, do we have any time to review it to see if it's something that we believe in or not before you guys go permitting?
Well, he's going to be the one negotiating, isn't he?
Negotiate? Don't they have to create it and then he just reviews it?
He's an LSP, so is his counterpart. They're deputized arms of the DEP. If he's okay with it, I'm okay with it.
So what I can say to that, we've had some, where Frank and I are very much aligned on what needs to happen, which is good. So in terms of the verbal discussion, now he needs to put everything in writing.
Right.
And then we'll be able to go through that very quickly.
I'm just going to point out that, we pointed that out, what, the first meeting? The first meeting with soil, this was pointed out ages ago. Thank you.
Christine Grove, pressure road. I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Mark.
Mark. You said there are higher concentrations that you have to be handled correctly, and some areas have higher risks for exposure. What are these concentrations of what? What are the, what are the chemical problems that you're facing, we're facing?
So your heavy metals, the two contaminants that you would often be concerned with on a orchard would be lead and arsenic. Lead here is extremely low, and arsenic is equally low but elevated in that eastern portion of the property. Then you have historic repra pesticides, which they are very low concentration on the property. There was one or two elevated spots again on that eastern edge. The, what I think is nice from the site history, the pesticides we're talking about were generally banned in the mid-1960s. And the property, the orchard history, I believe, started in the mid-'50s, if I remember correctly. We had a period of, a fairly short window of time that these pesticides were being used. So that is... So that is why we're seeing fairly low concentrations on the property. So the levels in comparison to, we take the levels that the lab tells us and we compare them to risk-based standards established by the DEP, and the levels for the most part are below those risk-based levels. A few areas they're above, but that concept of dilution or taking that material and placing it at greater depths will eliminate that risk. Without exposure, without direct contact, there's no risk. So that's where a management plan that presents scenarios of eliminating contact or exposure, then you have no risk.
You're talking about the loam at the top two feet of the property.
Or shallower, correct.
Shallower. But you'd never bury loam underneath anything to make it structural.
So we, we had that discussion and we're waiting to hear back on actually if they have an understanding of what the loam thickness is and if there is a notable loam layer, how they're going to handle it. So if you, because you have such a large volume of material being generated, you could potentially co-mingle that loam with more structural soil. The areas of fill are outside of the building footprint, so they may be looking at that it's more of a common fill, not a structural fill, but we'll need to wait to see what they propose on that surface loam material. For example, if they were to strip the loam and keep the loam entirely separate from all other soil, propose to use that loam as a final layer on the slope to grow grass, we would have a concern with that. Because now you're taking the material that is most likely the most contaminated and then placing it on the slope as a final layer, and we would be looking for ways to, for them to demonstrate that that is protective of human health and environmental risk. That is through additional sampling or other measures they may implement to reduce that concentration.
We have a structural, we have a large parking lot, we have a structure. We'd never, we'd never even try to put anything structural on the property.
Yeah, I don't disagree at all, and we really need to see how they're going to propose the management.
Say it's a protect or a two, I think two feet, you know, it's a million miles of material, it's a mountain of material, it's not something you can hotspot or on the property.
Right. For the data they've produced so far, the, that eastern edge of the property is the section that we're more concerned with. The rest of the property looks very good. So it's not that entire volume, it's a much smaller volume.
What would that property, would that possibly have to leave the site? Is it high enough to?
We'll have to see what they propose.
Arsenic and such.
Again, we'll have to see what they propose. I mean, if they had excess material that needed leaving the property, it'd be nice to preferentially identify the loam to leave. But again.
Yeah, for a science project.
So you mentioned several of the statements. Number one, when you say that, hey, this is really good, that this orchard is not as contaminated as other orchards we've been on, that doesn't change the fact that it's contaminated. What are the levels? You have not mentioned what the levels are. I know RCS1 for arsenic is 20. We had three samples that were done before. One was 25, one was over, it was not reportable for the year based on, you know, you have an exemption for some potential rules because you're a back in the orchard. Are there any other samples that are over the 20, and are they, you know, assuming they're not reportable?
Correct. The, there is an exemption, that nothing here on the property is currently identified as reportable. But reportable doesn't mean no risk.
Well, that's my point.
So, right, so that's.
If you're over the 20, that's a threshold that was set, and the bottom line is that just because it's not reportable doesn't mean nothing.
Correct. So that was something we brought up in our review to make sure, just because something isn't reportable, that we're ignoring it, and that's absolutely not the case. So of all the samples that were collected, they only had two samples that were for arsenic above 20, and the results were 25 and 21.8. So just relatively above that level. In environmental management, you can deal with dilution. Exposure is based on kind of average concentrations you may be exposed to. So you have two samples out of a large data set that is mostly below 20. So based on this information, we suspect they could demonstrate through the data that the average arsenic concentration would be below 20.
So, so that sounds good, so everybody knows, so how many samples over 25 acres?
Frank, how many? Um, 23, actually, oh, 24.
So that's 24 by two-inch samples?
Their sample depth was 18 inches.
How, what was this, you know, the sample, how much material?
He's getting into the core argument. They're talking about, you take a core and it's only two inches, so it's not representative as opposed to.
No, so what I'm saying is that you do have two samples that they see, and then there's other samples that are probably just below the threshold. So, and that's what we know, because that's, you know, the character. So are you telling us that, you know, you're a professional, you know, their characterization of this site is acceptable?
No. So it's interesting. So when the data first came to us, they had three samples.
Right.
So, and that's when I wrote my letter, and saying they needed a lot more samples. Then more samples arrived, and then Frank and I started talking, and then there was additional analyses, which helped bracket our recommendations a bit more. What I'm expecting as part of the soil management plan that there will be additional sampling. When the samples they collected were over a foot and a half deep, right? So as you go shallower at the surface, you're going to have your, your higher concentration of a pesticide. So if you had something at a very high level at six inches deep, but then you take a sample over two feet, it's going to average out, it's going to dilute it, right? So that's where we need to understand what they're doing with that loam layer. So if they're scraping off a foot of material, the data we have doesn't characterize a foot of material, it characterizes a foot and a half. So there will likely be a component of additional sampling that won't happen in that presumably, we could talk about, won't probably happen in the timeframe we're talking about, but there will be sampling that would happen to support their plan probably during the next construction to document conditions that will be, that would exist at the end.
There was a thing that was buried, because a lot of times these old farms or old sites like this have a form of any skin.
Did you read my letter?
No.
So, so one of the things we also brought up, which would be in the condition, was the unforeseen conditions that can be encountered during a large excavation. You've got solid waste disposal that can happen on a property. A lot of old farms buried their waste on properties that you may not find until you start digging around. So we want to make sure there's a provision to address the unforeseen condition if something is identified. So we are looking to make sure they are, at least on paper, prepared to address changed conditions during construction.
Now, you also wrote, gave a staging plan or a basing plan for this project. It's 25 acres of disturbance all at once, that is, in the industry, in any industry, an enormous amount of open area. I know when this project goes to conservation, we haven't done conservation yet. I've done that for a living, it's very, very, extremely deficient there, as far as conservation is concerned, as far as erosion controls. Staging is a big part of that, but that's something that you're going to recommend or are you willing to demand that there's staging done with this? Because if you start opening up this whole, you know, it's going to be a dust hole and a few of the contaminated soil. Even though, you know, you don't have to, the test results are showing that it's, you know, would say acceptable, but under low pressure. So is that something, are you going to?
We'd be looking for a staging plan in their document, particularly this, again, this surface stockpiled, surface loam that gets stockpiled somewhere on the property, how that's managed, controlled until ultimately reused on the property. You're bringing up other significant issues that certainly may come up in the Conservation Commission side of related to large disturbances and how you're managing stormwater runoff on the property, how you're protecting wetlands, how you're managing large soil cuts and the dust issues. Those are things that kind of leave our contamination realm, but get into other, other parts of the project that they would need to comply with.
Okay, so unfortunately, you're trying some of that because obviously you want to manage the soils. You have an agri plan, and pretty sure, I can imagine, PDP probably needs to look at this from up there. And there's no way they're going to allow a project to open up 25 acres. There's not one, you know, temporary settlement pond on these plants that I could say, I mean, 25 acres? That's, that's crazy. So I guess I just wanted to, you know, ensure that you're, you're going to, there's going to be somebody, the board's going to request that there's somebody with an LSP on site at all times while these guys are working, especially with these soils. Is that what you're saying?
That's up for discussion.
Yes, yeah, so I would highly recommend that. And then the other thing, I would like to add, the basing plan for this one, if you do not have a local, there's a lot of dust, which is one of the issues.
Stormwater, stormwater controls will be a huge part of their development plan. At the point if you've got that, that large acreage, a heavy rain event, you know, temporary basins to control stormwater runoff, you know, flooding neighbors with muddy water, you're, all those things. There is a component of managing the pesticide risk, and then you have a component of just managing general construction risk.
So the same, the question that the board had to put out about, you know, the stormwater and erosion. What did you think about that first rule? About the state, what did you think about?
The water cooler beam line I lost.
So, so was it contaminated soil, is it just into the wetland area? Like, just rather than.
Probably not contaminate the wells. Again, the types of contaminants are not highly soluble or mobile, so that's why they hang out at the surface on the property. So if they were highly mobile, you wouldn't be seeing traces on the surface. So we absolutely don't want the wetland to be impacted, and we're going to make sure their plan addresses that in a variety of measures.
Great. One more question. Did you ever mention where they do some tests? How do you put the test place? How do you put the test place? Test pits or borings? What borings? How deep did you go to check the last? If you're going over 20, you can clearly look over and see that there's a lot of some high power problems. You can touch it on the last seven, there's stuff.
27, 37, 32.
47.
47.
41.
21.
These are showers, must be down in the water, these are seven or 18, you can barely tell how much. Bullage. Place you tell, two of the deeper ends. And at the lower elevations, they didn't do this to you. Thank you.
I just want to understand, what's the rationale for not having a soil management plan that's reviewed by the planning board as part of the approval process as opposed to having a blanket approval of a project with a variety of contingencies for plans that have never been properly presented? Is it, what's the process and what's the rationale for not having the plans done?
I think that we just finished a discussion in which I asked, how long do we take them to do it? And they said, I asked our LSP whether he thought 30 days was sufficient, and he said it was. So I expect to have them.
So will there be another hearing?
If necessary, yes.
Do you have your loam guts if you did test for it? You should have your loam guts on site.
Yeah, I just, I found them after we asked the question. They're the draft version, but I don't believe they changed. It averaged about a foot of topsoil, some shallow, some little deep, but I would say averaged quickly in my head, about four.
Is there any way we could see that? Was that, was that on the?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the geotech report is, it's been submitted. That was submitted in August.
The boil, the boil, the boring, excuse me, are part of the geotech report that's submitted.
I hear everybody's being pretty confident that there's no ledge up there. It's just my own experience, I've done a few properties in this town, hired that engineer to get that analysis done, and of course, we hit ledge. Can we put a stipulation in there that, you know, there's no blasting? And if they hit ledge, I mean, they seem pretty confident that there is no ledge. So can you put a stipulation in there? Because the blasting is an issue.
Yeah, I mean, you have two options. You can blast or you hammer, and then they can, their engineers could comment more on options for bedrock removal.
Well, I mean, there is no bedrock. They've done all these tests, there's no bedrock. But if, when they hit bedrock, can we have stipulation that they can't blast?
It's something we'll discuss.
I mean, I don't think.
I think it really depends on the extent of ledge or.
Well, they, I mean, we did a lot of testing. There've been a lot of testing.
Hey, so look at the website, you can go to the website.
Right, I believe you guys have done a lot of testing. They shouldn't be worried about it, it makes us feel better.
Let's have, I'll have a conversation with council and we'll report back.
Okay, appreciate it.
I think they could take camcorders and record their foundation. It happened on the Powelline project I worked on, almost before they came through with blasting.
Yeah.
Because it dateimes it, so if you have any cracking in your foundation, you have proof that it wasn't there prior to the project.
Well, the first change in your wells.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's not just the dust, it's a whole bunch of stuff.
So, kind of on my last, the last one, the wetlands, like there was 20 access issues.
So there was a meeting on site on Monday. We had a soil scientist go out from Ecotec, out through Allen, and Mike Andrew, provisions dealing with, on behalf of the town, and he had Dan Louie, Mike Novak, and their wetland specialist, Ryan Waterman, walk the site and come back and discuss what they found. Dan, do you want to go over what their findings were?
Yes. So my apologies, I, yeah, I'd like to ask Mike Novak to describe in civil engineering terms what they found.
Well, to be, to be clear, I did not attend the site once, but I did attend a meeting. We had our wetland specialist, Ryan Waterman from WGA, in attendance with your consultants. They walked the line that had been previously delineated on site. I believe they both concurred in the meeting that there was no need for any adjustments. They were comfortable with that line. And then they evaluated the, let's see, west side of the, you know. They evaluated the west side of the site. If we recall, the question was, if access via DOT was obtained, could we get through what happened in regards to permitting? So again, I'll, they walked this line and I believe they went all through here and they're comfortable with delineation that's shown on our plans. And then they determined, and they agreed, again, both of these, what are shown as blue lines are intermittent streams, but would need crossings based on the streams that, the stream crossing requirements. And the idea was, there was a small upland in here to try to bring a road through, jump through the upland and come around. We all agreed that this area to the south would be the best place to try to traverse this wetland. Because the only other option would be to come straight across in this span. I believe we scaled it approximately 200 to 300 feet. That just didn't seem like a smart idea. So we all agreed that this would be the route. So we all agreed that this would be the route that we would, that we would attempt to, you could attempt to bring a roadway through. Couple of things that that would trigger. One, the idea of avoid minimizing and mitigate is basically how conservation and the old D E P looks at analysis like this. They would look at, say you have access to other places, so you're not avoiding, you're not minimizing. But if we took that, kind of put that to the side for a second. The other trigger was the 5,000 square feet of wetland alterations, which triggers a water quality 40144 permit through D E P and Army Corps. So we left the meeting with the grants that we should probably get an idea of if we did a preliminary look at a road through here, what would the square footage be of wetlands disturbance? We weren't able to completely finish a plan to present, but we did get some rough numbers. And being very, what I would deem aggressive, and happy to submit that with a letter from our consultants as soon as it's ready, tomorrow, probably tomorrow or Friday, with a, actually I made notes of our assumptions if I may, just so I get this right. So we went ahead and looked at a 22-foot wide pavement road with a foot of curving on each side, and also a five-foot shoulder on each side. Because of this long run, we would need some snow, we would have to have some places to plow that open. And then from that, a three-foot retaining, so straight down, no grading off or slopes or anything like that, really to try to be as tight as we possibly could. We did a layout, and then we ran a truck turning analysis, fire engine, make sure we could still get in there, so we weren't over exaggerating any turns, but weren't underestimating them as well. And again, we'll back all this up as soon as we can get it to you, but the approximate number of square foot of wetland disturbance was about 8100 square feet. So well over the 5,000, which would not only, of course, trigger the N O I that we already have to do, but is certainly going to D E P as well, probably whether or not D E P or Army Corps decided to take it. I believe the consensus from the meeting from the wetland specialists was, that's probably a six-month process, I think. Is that sound right?
Six to twelve.
Six to twelve, yeah, yeah, right. That's assuming that they just don't come out and say no within a month. And I don't want to put words in their mouth. I think the letters, I'll let them.
The letters won't say exactly.
Yeah, but I think the thought was, it was unlikely that that would be approved. I don't think anybody wanted to go on with them and say, it would never be approved, because that's, we can't say that. But it would be very unlikely with the alternatives for access, you're not only cutting through one, but two different sections of the wetland, it's just lies in the face of the avoid minimization, mitigate, and that's kind of where the analysis stopped. I don't know if that's enough. Happy to answer any questions if I missed anything.
We did get a letter today from Arthur Rehlin.
Okay.
Who basically concurs with your analysis. And I think it was his opinion that it would be very difficult to cross the wetlands because they're, and get conservation commission approval, because it's their job to protect the wetlands as much as possible. And there is an alternative access from Old Worcester Road via El Steen Thron. So the conservation commission would look at that very presciently to just question why you would need to do that if there was an alternative access. And the fact that it does exceed the 5,000 square foot of wetland alteration makes it even more likely, unlikely that the conservation commission would approve. But it would not be possible for them to make that determination unless the plan was actually submitted, and they had the full impact analysis.
I believe, if I may, Todd, George Raddine Conservation Engineer also weighed in on this with email saying, pretty much it would be unlikely that they would consider this viable alternative to the access that may be present already. I think he was careful not to speak for his commission, but I think he leaned in that direction. I think you have that email. So what you're telling us is that there's a lot of wetlands over there, and then it's unlikely that you're going to get approval to bring a road in from that part of the site. Have you submitted anything at all to Mass D O T about that opening or alternative openings? For example, further down where sort of where the gas easement is? Has anything been submitted to them? Because we're going on the assumption here that, you know, oh, we can't have access from Route 20, but we haven't submitted anything to Mass D O T. My guess is if you went to Mass D O T and you said, hey, look, you know what, we'd love to put an entrance in over here, but where the wetlands are, you know, it's a daunting task, it doesn't seem like that's operative, it's going to work, you know, what else can we do to the road to have an access on the other side of your property? I mean, I guess you would say it would be the eastern portion. Has anybody, have you proposed anything to Mass D O T? I mean, they can't comment on anything if you don't provide them with any information. Simply calling them and chit-chatting isn't really, you know, isn't the answer here. Again, just because you say you have alternate access coming in from the local road, Morton Station Road and Old Worcester Road, again, that's a residential road, it's not designed for the loading that's going on here. The crash rate is extremely high over there, 64% higher than the state average. So as far as I'm concerned, I mean, that, you're not doing your due diligence again. Why haven't you reached out to Mass D O T and sat down with them? And you could point that out to them, that, hey, look, this isn't good access because of all the wetlands and things, and, you know, what about access over here? What else can we do to make access over here work? Has that been done?
So we've covered this at the last meeting. Prior to that meeting, we actually had a sit-down meeting with Mass D O T, with our traffic engineer, and then I believe it was reviewed with Jennifer. And we went through alternate locations and suggestions for entry off of Worcester Road, and their preference was to not come off of Worcester Road. However, if there was any likely location coming off of Worcester Road, it was this location to the furthest west, which is exactly why we then went back, scheduled this meeting at the board's suggestion at the last meeting, to find out whether or not this was, you know, essentially readily feasible or a pipe dream. And then we went and we did that homework. So we did meet with D O T, it was a face-to-face meeting, the engineers were present, we did do that homework, we reported that homework back to the board, and then we did what the board asked us to do in follow-up on that homework. So I.
Well, again, I reperception that from the point of view that I called Mass D O T and spoke with the engineer, and he specifically said that, you know, he had no idea how much traffic was going to go in on a local road, and that nothing was presented to them or for, or there was nothing, when you don't give them anything to officially, you know, absorb and look at, you had a meeting, big deal, you know, you need to submit something to them. You haven't submitted any plan much about.
Can I ask you a quick question? Did you speak to the engineer that we had the meeting with?
Yes, Adam DeBullis. Okay, and basically he said, hey, we can't, Mass D O T, we can't officially comment on anything when we're not submitting anything. So it comes back to, you need to go back to Mass D O T as far as I'm concerned, and you need to put the cards on the table and say, hey, look, we can't go come in where you would like us because of the wetlands, okay? We would prefer to go further down the road, because obviously coming in through the local road, through Old Worcester Road, is a little bit on the crazy side. And here's the thing, I did an analysis of your truck traffic. The analysis that you guys provided was a little bit deficient, that you came up with 5,000 trucks roughly. Basically, you put this man on it that the average was 30 trucks per day. Excuse me, you had 3500 trucks. I did an analysis of it, and it was about 5,500 trucks. And that was leaving out all sorts of trucks, rebar trucks, manhole trucks, road trucks, road grout, all sorts of things. So, you know, you're talking about 6,000, 7,000 trucks that are going to have to come in here during construction. You guys are on this aggressive planning, you're telling everybody you're going to make, build this place in 12 to 18 months. You're going to have days where there's more than 100 trucks on that road. It doesn't, construction trucks don't come on an average of 30. You're doing a big pour, for example, you're going to have.
I need to ask a question.
So the question is, is that how come they haven't submitted anything to Mass D O T for them to comment on officially? As they have.
Sure, I have an answer. At that meeting when we talked about it, the response was, don't bother. It's not viable.
Do we have anything in writing from D O T?
You know, the short answer is, let's have Jen just touch base with Mass D O T.
We'll have our engineer follow up and see what.
Okay, because, again, if they go back and they say, look, we can't come in, we would prefer us to come in, we need to go over here, what else can we do to make that work?
Can I just, can I point out, Jen actually did contact D O T, and then Jen spoke to that at the last meeting.
But nothing in writing. Not one word.
So we'll get that in writing from Jen.
Quick question, Gerard Russell, Old Worcester Road. I think Mr. Caution makes some excellent points. All of what we're hearing tonight is all about verbal meetings. There's nothing in writing. Can we get something in writing from Mass Highway?
That's all right. But we'll get Jennifer Conley, who was our peer reviewer, to summarize this in writing.
Quick question. The gentleman mentioned average 30 trucks per day. If, it will be 31, can I stop? No.
Can we condition?
Another question. 25 Old Worcester.
Can we condition the amount of trucks that are going every day on that?
Are you talking during construction or operations? What's your operating?
Either or both. I mean.
If I remember correctly, there's a statute in terms of road closures and regulations and limitations that has to go through the regional office of D O T. And I think Jen brought that up last.
I'm very uncomfortable of having any trailer trucks going up that residential road. Is it a reasonable condition to say we're not allowing those, how big are they, 60-something? How big are they when they, their full length, 52 feet? Can we not allow 52-foot trailer trucks to go to that, to have access to that property at all? I think it's a danger, it's a safety issue in general on a residential road with, a school bus and a trailer truck could not fit.
I see where you're going with that, but the traffic studies said it wasn't a problem. That's kind of what we think we need to go on. And I agree. I think looking at it.
I did see a US bleach truck, and then I did that a couple of weeks ago. Sure, I went to the school. That's just, I mean, if you, for trail trucks, you use it to go to other places, you can't, I don't think they can, I wouldn't regulate this, but I see your point.
I'll have a call.
Excuse me, ma'am, Chair, I think you can regulate the weight on that though. And that, because of the size of the truck, the way you limit that, by weight, those trucks are so heavy. Because the road can't take the weight.
You don't have posted roads in Massachusetts. If there was a bridge on the road, you could post it.
There is. The copper is right on that curve.
A bridge.
Right on the west side, back end, that's the middle pipe.
And we've limited trucks for the, for the seller up, down by, down that road too. So I wonder.
That's what the selectmen.
Yeah.
Very, very important.
So the selectmen can limit trucks.
Okay.
But only, in some circumstances, they can only do it with D O T.
So we'll look a little further into that.
21 Old Worcester Road. So I just mean, you cannot build roads through the wetland because of conservation. Conservation, modern nature is buried. But who conservates us? If you can build roads, build the bridge.
I like that.
Why not? It's the 21st century. We built the aircraft carrier.
Okay. So.
I think it's a real question. It's a great question.
What's the lay call on access to property? Is there any rules?
Yeah, okay, all right.
All right, so are there any other specific questions on?
Let's try to get Jen back.
We'll try to get Jen back. Yes.
Roger Clute, 17 Coben Road. This is out there, I'll admit it. But on the corner of Old Worcester Road and Route 20, there's a piece of property there. Happened to know the owner. And they would love to sell that, pro V G G, and would love to sell that property to the V G G. I can't speak about the price or nothing. I don't know, but there is that corner that they were hoping that you guys would offer money for. If it had butchered land, it might help with the problem. All I'm throwing it out there is a suggestion.
It looks like there's a lot of wetlands up there, and it looks like.
Okay, it may not be a solution, I'm just saying is, is that, I'm hoping you guys would.
Make him an offer on that.
If you would like to ask him to give us a call, we're happy to hear if he's willing to be reasonable.
Well, again.
Yeah, I understand.
It has to be related to my rights.
Ask her to ask him.
I don't.
All right, so.
I think the board's ready to fish for another date, and then we can just.
I'm generally leaving in 60 days.
No matter what, you have to make a decision tonight of, you need to request an extension, right?
We're discussing up here. Quarter, quarter.
Council for the other side has agreed to extend. And the terms of the extension are that the decision will be filed with the town clerk on January 3rd, which gives us two opportunities to meet between now and then. I know you have a regular meeting scheduled for the 2nd. My goal would be to have another meeting of this kind on the 11th, if it's convenient for everybody. It is convenient for them, and it is convenient for me. And then after that, I would begin the preparation of a draft decision. And I would intend to give it to you three, four days in advance of the 2nd, so that you'd have a chance to read it, mark it up. We wouldn't discuss it by email, you would bring your questions to the meeting, I'd bring my laptop to the meeting, and we'd sit here, we'd hammer the damn thing out, we'd have it finished for me, printed up on Bill's machine, and you say it on the 3rd, on the 2nd, we file it on the 3rd, if that works for you.
And if something happens that we find that we still don't have enough information at that point, then it's just kind of, we'll talk about it again and figure out what we need to do from there.
Well, I didn't promise to make favorable decision on the 2nd or 3rd. I promised them a decision. So if you do have the power to say that your information is incomplete, then you can take that into account in your decision making. But for tonight's purposes, that's where we are.
So you suggested.
December 11th.
Correct.
And January 2nd.
Right. Well, I would say that if we had to decide tonight, the information is complete, and I could not be conscious.
Right.
Loud. Nobody's asking if you have. So that's one thing, so it's good to know that we have the extra time. December, so we've got a meeting on the 5th? No.
Yes.
Well, not anymore.
Not anymore?
Not on this.
Okay. We do have.
We've got three teams of people going out.
Can I ask one question? We do have the subdivision approval on the 5th. Might it make sense to add, move that to the 11th if we go on the 11th?
Yeah, just looking at the dates on that, it was, she applied in late October?
They, yes, they, within the window.
So you're still, you have a 90-day window.
Yes.
So it'll be November, December, January, so we don't need an extension of time.
Yeah, for the definitive plan.
No.
So we're just thinking, rather than do it on the 5th, then make everybody coming out on.
The 11th?
Yeah, if we could move it from the 5th to the 11th as well.
All right, is it now, did you announce at the last meeting that the definitive plan would be reviewed on the 5th?
Correct, when the hearing was open.
Right, is there another meeting that night for some other business?
Yes.
So you just announced the further continuance to the 11th. Sure, so the 11th, and what's the second date? The 8th? Or we want to do something? It'll be the 2nd. 2nd is the meeting. And we're going to keep your public hearing.
I think we added, we added that in every single meeting automatically, just in case we have to, we used to take it off.
So we really don't have one more meeting to discuss anything, because questions come up on the 2nd.
We should keep it open on.
We're keeping the public hearings open, so that, for example, the soil management plan I'm hearing for 30 days, have it by the 2nd. That's easy for me to, it's easy for me to write around it.
We should keep that.
Yeah, but you can play. We made that evidence of it, to Christmas week.
They need to formally request an extension.
Yes.
In writing?
Yes.
Okay.
And it needs to be filed with the town clerk. Clerk's office.
Okay.
As soon as the board agrees on the schedule, yes. Michael, can you begin giving us a written extension on a piece of paper?
Let's not take this off of the fifth, because we already, it's, it's already, it's been, let's not change, just keep it.
Seven-ten of the, oh, the seven-twenty.
This is, it's already scheduled, the site plan.
Is that the definitive plan or the site?
A definitive and a site plan.
Yeah, why would you leave another for the.
Not the definitive.
Why would you do either? You don't have any time crunch on the definitive plan. The definitive plan is ninety days from date of ten minutes. They submitted it on October twenty-second.
So January twenty-second.
Roughly, yeah.
Alright.
Let me just make sure.
I'm sorry, just in case we, in case we have something, oh, okay, so you leave it on the. Just in case we need, just in case we, if something new comes up and we want to discuss or whatever, the cases.
Yeah, this letter stated October twenty-second notifying you that they just submitted, so. That gives you November, December, January, that's roughly ninety. Might be eighty-nine, might be ninety-one. Is there, is there a problem we're taking off? Because I don't want to leave that. Yeah, that's why I'm asking. So is there, why, why would we leave that on if we have no plans on discussing anything? That would just cause a lot of the, the towns to want to come here, we're not, so. I would recommend we take it off right now, so that it's taken to the. So we're, we're talking about the next meeting, removing VGG from the, from the meeting on the fifth. Since, and continue this meeting to the eleventh. As well as the definitive site plan to the eleventh. The thought was to leave it on and just continue it. But to do that and cause such a great big crowd to show up for no reason at all, doesn't seem like a good thing to do, so we'll remove it from the schedule. And add another meeting on the eleventh, is that, so that's the question.
In place of the twelfth.
In place of the twelfth, we'll be twelfth to the eleventh, and then add a, and then the next meeting will be on the second. And the decision, decision will have to be on the second.
Okay, you need a motion on that or?
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion that our meeting on December eleventh, December twelfth, be moved to December eleven.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
You can just stop there, we can do the next one at the next meeting. You don't need to do both. You know who knows what's going to happen, so just, one's good enough.
Okay.
But the applicant has given you an extension time in writing, and I think you should have a motion to the, to the, you should accept.
Accept the extension.
The extension to January third filing with the town clerk. That'd be another motion.
Do we have a motion?
Do you want to read it?
So request to the Trump Mass Planning Board, Valley Greenrow Inc. hereby requests an extension for the deadline for the planning board to file a decision regarding site plan application until and including January third twenty, twenty nineteen. Respectfully submitted Valley Greenrow Inc. by Michael Rosen, its counsel.
Perfect. If you would be kind enough to copy that and give a filed copy to the town clerk just to check with the court.
To make a motion, we accept that letter.
Can you just accept that?
Does that include the subdivision?
No.
Several.
Oh, second.
On favor?
Aye.
You have more stuff to do, right?
Yes. Yes, we have stuff, thank you very much.
Excuse me, folks. We do have a continuing meeting going on in here, so if you could just move out and keep the parking, also that we can continue on. Really appreciate it. Be nice to get home before eleven. Thank you.
I'm like an eight-hour person.
Appreciate your help. Nice meeting you.
How's she doing though?
She's jumpy. No, she's glad, she has a picture from here, here in New Orleans, says she's on an island, since she's been three months. So we found that removed, but we're sorry to. Do you want me to give you my email? I, I.
You don't do email? Come in and talk to Bill when he's in the office, that's the only other.
Yes, talk to Bill, he can always. Okay.
So what's next?
So, I just want to. Okay, so I, so at the selectmen's meeting last Tuesday, Jane and I pulled Jonathan aside. And we asked him if we could hear four score because the plan's clean. And the only reason for like, we're, they're being held up because the selectmen are waiting on the results of the, the bylaw vote. And it's so up in the air, everybody has their opinions. But I thought, wow, is it, is it really fair that we're, that their, their plan seems so clean and simple and we're going to hear them? So anyways, Jonathan gave us, in writing, that his interpretation, that we could in fact, and I think you guys all got that email. Jane sent it to everybody. And we could all have it in our.
I don't think I got it, but I may have.
So if, so we have our. So Jonathan did say that he thought that in this case his legal opinion and, and, you know, all the lawyer stuff, blah, 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 blah. This is why, this is my opinion. The result is that, yes, he thinks that we could legally hear it and then put the condition after we hear it, that, that the whole, that the whole agreement would need to be signed. So pretty much it's all negotiated and it's just not signed yet. So they're, and the reason why they're not signing it is because of all, like lawsuits and everything that's happening.
How would, how would the ballot vote affect four score?
Well, we don't, so the ballot vote. It's still up, so you talk to one person and they're sure that it's going to be a win, and then the other person is sure that it's going to be a lose, right? So it's all totally up in the air.
But no, if it passed, how would that affect four score?
If it, ballot will pass and there was no recreational, then they would have no business. I mean, it would, it would, it would be, it's their wasted time and my, and I guess our time too.
Sure, it's our wasted time too.
But it's their wasted money and I, I feel like they kind of got the short end of the stick because they did apply at the same time that VGG. Because I, and it just, they just kind of, they kind of just, it's, it seems like it's just not a fair process. And I guess we don't have to look at the fair process, but why not? It seems like we get through them in two short meetings. Why wouldn't we do that to get it, to make it happen for them? It's, it's, it's a clean plan, it's in a good place, it's industrial, it follows every single one of our bylaws, no, no grandfather in, in or anything like that. It's, it's good revenue for the town. It's small and in an industrial zone. And they've been more than cooperative showing up multiple times. I think that we could add them and it would be the right thing to do. That's just my concern, and we got it in, you know, from KT law, that they feel that it would be.
So, can I give you my, my opinion on it?
Of course.
I, and I agree with you that.
Alicia not here, does she?
So I, I agree with you, it's, it's a much cleaner plan. I don't agree with you that we could get through it in two meetings. I still think there's still a lot to discuss and look at and evaluate. The towns did also speak in the town meeting and said that they, they want to approve these agreements, and that can't be done until May at the earliest. So I think to even look at their plan now is, is jumping the gun. I mean, we could go through and approve it and spend a lot of time doing it. I still think we should wait until, until the agreement is signed, or, or at least closer to that time when the agreement gets signed. If we want to review it in April, you know, closer to the time, the town meeting, once it's been determined whether that's a legal law or not, I'd say okay. But I think to do it now is really premature because there's so much that can go on in the next six months that I think, you know, changed things completely. So I still think it's too early to do that.
If VGG, like if this doesn't have, it just, I feel like it kind of gives it, the project, which, I mean, we were planning on hearing it. So I think probably the whole board has read the plan. And it is very clean and simple.
Much cleaner than.
That, not, that it would kind of just speed things up instead of waiting until.
If we go ahead and review the plan and everything, how does that affect a vote maybe that's going to happen in May?
That's, that's the other thing, is, is they can look at that and from our decision, the attorney general could look at that and say, well, you know, it's hardly gone through. You know, planning board approval and everything, so that may affect their judgment in, in how they accept or don't accept the law.
Are we going through planning board approval for VGG anyway?
We kind of have no choice there because that agreement has already been signed.
Has it?
I just think it's too.
Has it?
We don't even.
Has it?
I assume it has, that's what I was told. I just think it's premature.
It was just a thought process.
I think being six months.
They did the same exact thing that VGG did. They, the same week they, they submitted, they just kind of got their foot under the stick there. And I'm just trying to equalize them because it seems like everybody has a bad taste in their mouths because of the, because this is a huge project. And I'm just, I was, I'm, and again, I'm only bringing it in front of the board because I thought, wow, the, like, they're willing to pay for all their engineering fees and all that. And risk that, they're going to risk that. And yes, we're going to have to spend, you know, I think it can be done two, three meetings. Why, you know, why not be, think about economic development and get in the middle of Little Suzan and making it happen? And then it's their risk, they're paying for engineers, they're paying for fees, they're paying for everything. And then if they, if the ballot vote passes and there's no recreational, then that's their loss. And the town, now we have all, all the fees that they paid to, to see to us. And if they don't get a host agreement, then that, again, that's their loss, they paid.
How, I don't, I just don't understand though, how can, how does that vote in May affect VGG?
So if, if the, the attorney general decides that, that we can have that vote and it will count, then nothing happens. There can be no recreational marijuana at all in town.
Well, then the lawyers, of course, figure it out after that.
Well.
But I, I see, I see your point. Now, I, I told you, I feel like, you know, if, whatever the board decides, if, you know, I just think it's premature and, and it goes kind of against what the town is, is asking.
I'm not sure what the, I, I mean, what I'm, what I'm hearing in town is that we have, we have this project here that is absolutely huge and it shouldn't go in an agricultural zone. But everybody else is saying, bring in the pot factory, bring in, bring in the revenue, just don't have them near houses.
Yeah.
So that's what, I mean, that's what I'm hearing from, like, all the soccer moms. So, um, it's to all the soccer moms. But, and again, I just brought it up because I just thought it would, it, it was worth the discussion. I wish Alicia was here so she could be in on this.
She just sent you an email, by the way, I don't know what she, might have been about this.
Both showing up. That's surprised, like, I should have stayed home, whatever.
So I don't know if, do we want to think about it a little bit more? Do we, if, do we want to wait until Alicia is here to, do we want to vote on it?
Talk about, it's something to think about?
What do you think, Ross?
Let's wait for Alicia, because she usually has a level of mind, and she has good, good points. On either side of anything, so. Let's wait, let's, I'd like to see some input from Alicia on that. And also has, is that a pain event shared to Kirk? Because I know that he was, so when we came up with that marijuana bylaw, that for host agreement.
Right.
Mine was in it, so.
In there it says to negotiate, it doesn't say sign.
What was it, even, that's real? Okay, gotcha. The language is the language.
Yep, and he said, he's, and he did say that that's probably what we meant, but that was how it was written.
Right. And I'm sure Kurt has a different view on that. I'm sure he does.
But his, his is more advisory, and what we're going to say, illegal?
Yeah, we have a legal, so he's saying that, he was standing up in court. So we're, so it would really be upon the board to decide. So maybe at the next.
Still on there in the line, I guess.
Meeting, which we have the December fifth meeting, when we get, Alicia.
Make sure Alicia comes to that meeting.
No, she won't.
Sure, it's something to think about, if you can, if you can think about it.
I mean.
I'm just, just so the co-board and we can think about it. Again, I'm thinking about, we, we do need the revenue in town and why wait six months? Why, why wait, wait, when we can get it done and then, and then have it, the process, the actual permit, and everything start that much earlier? If we, if we can help the development of town. The other thing that I wanted to talk about was, we have, with attorney help.
Just so that, Mike, we just hit on the whole board. Sorry.
That's all right.
I saw you still here, I saw on the list, so.
Yeah, should I just jump in?
Yes, please.
One item I wanted to add to tonight's meeting about this holy road solar project. We did a site visit a couple of weeks ago, first site visit, we just cleared the land. And we noticed that on the.
We have a copy here.
On the east side of the property, which is the side that abuts all the residences on, I forget the name of the street. The ones out, the ones out, what is it?
Parche Chute?
Yeah, the ones out most vocal of meeting when the easement runs through. Plan showed a ten-foot buffer to remain on the project side, tree clearing, they cleared right to the robbery line, in our opinion, right to the stone wall. So they have gone for what the plan shows. I have yet to bring this up with the developer and make them aware of it, pending a discussion with you folks and make sure on the same page. They are, they are in violation of the site plan at this point. Order to remedy that is what I was going, my discussion with them was going to be. I want the board to see what we're, if there's a violation out there currently.
Alright. Just one question, well, what's the status of their, their solar farms on Senate Deepwater Road and North Service Road? Is there any, any of the ones on Brookford Road?
Brookfield Road, those, I believe, were signed off.
Signed off?
Yeah.
North Service Road?
North River Bridge, no.
Senate Deepwater Road, no, either, or the paddocks one?
That one is, that one is.
That one signed off?
I believe it is. We had no further issues on, on my end, my end.
Okay, I know that there's some deficiency on tree planting, a flooding.
I think that was taken care of.
Alright, I think I might usually take a ride out.
I haven't, I haven't heard anything since.
Yeah.
There was some more trees that they want to plant, and I, we went out and followed up, and I believe that was done.
Alright, am I just checking in on the paper? If you recall it? And just touch base with Jane, if you don't mind, that'd be great.
With who?
With Jane, just check with Jane.
Yeah.
If you recall it.
But I know for River Road we had, had a first, or maybe even a second completion.
Okay.
There were still some outstanding issues.
Okay, just want to check since we had.
That's been a while.
Since it's the same contractor, and just haven't had a chance to touch base on it. Alright.
So what's the remedy plan or mediation plan for the excess, for that buffer, that ten-foot buffer away?
Well, I think it's, they had to propose something and review it, I think, could involve replanting. Well, I think it's, they ought to propose something and review it, I think, could involve replanting that area.
Yeah.
Or, or something else. And sign off.
So you'll, you'll go, you'll notify, tell me you'll notify?
Yes.
Do you have any suggestions in terms of, uh, buffering that, like, uh, go in to replace the trees that have taken down?
Well, I have to look at the area first, um, yeah.
Heavily dense.
It's heavily dense.
Last photo, I don't know if you have a color of black and white, can you see if that's a color, okay.
Yeah.
That stone wall is, is the property line.
And, and my saying is that's still their property line and there still should be a buffer from their property line to where, where they could see, because that's.
That's what the, the plan that you.
The plan, the plan, that's what the plan called for, so that should be, of course, in some way, I, you know, I just.
So we could require a ten-foot wide strip along that entire property line because it'd be planted.
Sure.
Yeah. Right.
That's, that's what I would, I'm leaning towards right now.
Or if they have some, some alternative method that they would like to present to us, that would be fine.
Right.
But they're looking at replacing what they took out.
I think that landlord, that landlord has the right to, to, you know, utilize his whole property without staring at the solar property. Please, Mike. Awesome, thank you.
Sorry, Attorney Pill.
Yes, so, um, just because of the way things happened with Attorney Pill, um, he, he did in fact, and I spoke to Mark about this, um, he did in fact believe that he has been hired because of the way we had, we had reached out and.
His letter says, I know I haven't been hired and I know I'm not, you know, part of this, but I wanna give this to you anyways. So he knew at that point that he was.
That was after, he thought, after.
There was other stuff he gave us first.
Yeah, it was, and if you, if you look at some of the correspondence in the, and he, today he spoke to Mark, he believed that he wrote those letters. And then the, the long letter was to defend, you know.
That I write the choose a reason to be monitored.
Yeah, it was just, it was messy, and, and in our mind, he was the only attorney, out of all the attorneys we reached out to that called us back. Um, and, I mean, Mark's great, the only reason that he took the job is because Glasgow personally called him and said, can you please do me a favor and help with planning board? So, um, and honestly, just the second letter probably would have cost two grand if we paid an attorney to write that. So, um, I'm looking that we should kind of make it right by, um, offering, you know, an, an amount to be, to be paid, to be fair, um, this board. We have money somewhere in our budget to, to take care of that, and I think that we should do that out of a, a gesture of kindness. I think he could, he could take some of the correspondence and, and fight us technically for it if he wanted to. And he was an absolute gentleman about kind of stepping back because things are messy, were messy here with the, with our process, um, the entire town hall process, so I think that we should think about, um, paying him for his services, um.
We talked about Michael Pill?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, he did that all on his own, we didn't ask him to, um, do that research and.
Yeah, it was the email that said, the board, the board would like to hire you, could you send us your, your, you know, like.
Sure, some information, your, your.
Yeah, could you send us your proposal, could you send us, could you send us your proposal? The board would like to hire you, would you send us your proposal, um, that was what, so.
But I think he was at risk by.
I, and, and I agree with, I, I, I don't agree with paying him. If he wanted to send us a bill, then we could talk about it, but I, I don't like spending the town's money for something that we didn't officially request from him that they just did on, on his own. You know, he did it almost as a job interview, I think, to, to try to persuade us to hire him. Uh, it was an advertisement.
Did you see some of the correspondence, or the board would like, the board would like to, the board would like to obtain you as our attorney, could you please send us your proposal so we can get it signed?
I did not, but, but until that proposal is signed, I, I think.
So you don't get paid for work until you sign contract.
Yeah, and I, I, that's, that's my feeling too, you know, I appreciate him putting the effort in, um, but unless he sends us a bill, and I, I don't like spending the town's money for, for something that we did not officially contract to, to get done, I don't think that's.
You mean like an EDC director? Oh, oh, sorry. We only, we only could find money for certain things.
As, as far as the, this deal goes, uh, I, I don't think, I don't think the board should, should offer him up for, for the services that he unofficially offered, the work that he unofficially did, I don't, I don't agree with that, but. If somebody wants to make motion of you.
I think we.
I think we should just, out of, you never know if you're gonna need him again for anything. You may never need him, but.
And, I see, I don't think he was expecting to get paid. Did he, did he request to you that he gets paid for that, or did that request come in?
No, um, he had, he had a conversation with Mark and he thought he was retained by the emails that he, um, he received and I, it's, um, I thought.
He sat down here at this table and he says, I'm here as a.
After, but it was after the fact.
That was before he talked to Mark, it was before Mark came in, and he was sitting at the table and said, no, I'm just an inter, I'm, I'm a concerned citizen, that's why I'm.
Because all the, all the things happened with the, with the selectmen's meeting and, and the choosing of the, the attorneys. Pretty much, we went to the, we went to the selectmen's meeting, um, Gene and I, we were there. Um, we had an attorney, we, we were going to fight for him and we pretty much were handed lists saying, here, use these attorneys, they're, that's who, oh, we want, we, we want Attorney Pill. No, here, these attorneys, and then we finally said, okay, Gene brought up, well, then we'll take Mark if he can, though we did, we did call him and he didn't call us back.
But we didn't ask him to do anything, he did that completely on his own without any authorization from the town.
If I talked to somebody about coming and, and, you know, cleaning up my yard, they just showed up and started cleaning up, but then I really didn't want that to happen. I'm sorry you came, but I didn't hire you, you know, I, you did the work trying to convince me. If somebody just showed up at your house and painted your house, would you pay them?
Chairman Chair, okay, if you can, can be helpful, just read the emails and see if I.
If he wants, like I said, if he wants to submit a bill, they'll make a look at that and discuss it. Right now, we have no bill from them.
We never accepted his proposal.
We never accepted his proposal.
I see, I see both sides, you know, I mean, and people that donate their time, I mean, it's time, especially these days. It's valuable, time's valuable, I mean, he provided some good information.
So as you know, that I did, it was, it was Mark that said he believed he was hired and that we should probably see if we have a lull in our budget to, to reimburse him for those letters because he did thousands of dollars.
But we also didn't use those letters, we didn't accept them, we didn't talk about them or incorporate them in any of our thinking, so. We needed all that, we really don't.
Can I want an official vote that we, we don't, or we don't, so do I? Do we want, okay, so we'll do that, we'll wait, we'll wait for Alicia so we have our entire board then. Something to consider.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we, Bill, do you wanna go through new business, or?
Yes, we have, um, uh, the, the MTA program application. Being righted actually, I thought the board might wanna consider whether you had any particular, uh, activities you wanted to request CMRCC to, to do on town. We have others, an application process of, once we have a proposed program, we would fill out a form and submit it to CMRCC and they would take it to the physical development committee and decide whether it's worthwhile and, uh, should we provide service to the town for what we proposed. The one idea I had, and I included that in the hack, is something called a zoning diagnostic. And I just copied one sheet from Town Harbor's zoning diagnostic, which is sort of an introduction to it and describes what that kind of a report would look like. So it would really be an overview of zoning by law, go through it line by line, identify all deficiencies in it, and propose, you know, work elements to be undertaken later. And then the second section might look at sort of a broader view of what kinds of other sorts of regulations or bylaws or zoning initiatives that the planning board might wanna consider.
We have been talking about this for a while now, about doing a complete overhaul of our zoning and making it modern to, to the year two thousand and eighteen versus, um, the sixties.
So this would be a prelude to that effort, or simply identify things for a consultant to work on. So anticipate studies of means with planning wards, EDA, building permission, identifying things.
I think this is gonna be the first piece, we definitely need to start thinking about the, the master plan again and this might be the first, like, good project this year to kind of lead us into getting.
Right.
I think it's a good idea, what would it cost and is it something that we'd have to bring in front of the town meeting to get the funding for?
No, see, we, we do this for us.
This is a bigger, bigger, Plato, this is a, a, kind of like, I don't wanna say it's a grant, but it's.
It's a service.
It's a service.
So, it does say that the, that the municipality must provide a five percent incentive match, so there is some cost associated.
We have planning studies, do we have anything on our planning study, but.
We haven't passed.
We usually have planning study budget.
That's what I'm asking, well, what is the cost and what do we have in the budget and, and.
Well, if we ask for ten.
Could we fund it through the border?
Say ten dollars, whatever, level of.
Ask for money.
I mean, it'd be worth it when, when the ninety-five percent of the project gets paid for, you know, if we're only putting a certain percentage down, I mean, this is.
Can we use marijuana money for this?
We don't have any marijuana money. But we could if, if we could, if we heard four score.
So I don't know if you had any other suggestions, this is just one that I have, if you have other planning studies.
Need to look at it.
Would you like to just go with this idea, or do you want to come out and small?
No, I think, I mean, I'm, I'm, do we need to look further into it, will, I mean, do we wanna do it, if, if, as long as we have the funding to do it? This is.
Go ahead and submit one for, for what you're talking about. And then if you think of anything else, you can submit a second one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Always take advantage of free money, that, free services that come in. And it's something that we definitely got.
Did you see that petition intervene?
Yeah.
I sent that out to you a day or two ago, and Dan, you had mentioned this at the last meeting.
Sure, there's, so there's two different levels of participation, there's an intervener and there's a limited participant?
Yes, correct.
What is the requirement for our time for each of those? If we go in as a petitioner, do we have to attend all the meetings, do we need to attend all the meetings, do we?
No, no obligation.
There's no obligation to attend, we can get information, we can submit information.
Yes, gives you wide access to the process.
Okay, okay.
You can become as involved as you want.
Okay. So I, I did see that there was some participation in the meetings that was required or, or allowed, I just don't know what that, what, if it was required or if it was.
It is not required, but it's.
Do we need someone to be a, a delegate, or do we kind of, can we take turns for attending, or how does, how do?
Yeah, I think it would be on behalf of the planning board, so any member of the board could go and be represented, or represent the board at, at the hearing.
This can't have forum, so two of us could go without it.
Yeah, I think you could go, or we're doing, you could go without it being an official meeting, if you don't, without planning board business.
I think certainly the planning board should be as, as detailed part of this.
Sure, I think we should get as much information as we possibly could. My understanding was as a limited participant, you were given all the information, you just could not call witnesses or.
You were passive, you were passive.
More of a passive receiver, which I thought was great information for us to get, to be able to make decisions. I don't know if we have the expertise on the staff to go and, and call witnesses and petition witnesses and whatnot. So my original assumption was limited participant, uh, limited participant, but petitioner, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with either.
But at least go and speak, right, we, I mean, we definitely, if we, if, if someone from our board wants to make a comment, we certainly.
Sure, sure, we should be able to do that.
I'd like to make a motion that we be in, in T V N R status.
Could you give me some?
Did you have the, what are we doing? So all I need to do then is email that over.
Yes, you take a vote?
Yep.
Vote?
Aye.
Oh, uh, Tim, Russ, you would ask if you could attend the meeting, he's not available on the fifth, but he said he could attend on the twelfth. And we moved that meeting, we need to get back to him, see if he can come on the eleventh.
Yeah, can you just check, what, what's the deadline game, begin in December, right?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, all right, no problem, just make sure you have updates.
Maybe, maybe take him right up there, take a look at things?
I just did drive by.
Did you?
Yeah. Same.
Some improvements?
He grabbed them, and I, I checked with Mike, he took a ride up, we do this past week.
Uh, we do have, uh, a plan, definitive plan to accept, uh, Masaka property has submitted, a definitive plan, they will follow that up with a solar project on their property. Um, you need to submit the definitive plan in order to maintain their zoning exemption. Uh, we have a copy over here, if you'd like to take a look at it.
Which plan was that?
For Masaka.
Oh, Masaka.
It's a, it's short, called a SAC, two lot, two large lots, it's one of which will become a solar field. Uh, they will probably submit that in January in a solar, um, site plan application.
Okay, wait, when did they submit the, back before the?
Yeah, it was in the, uh.
Okay, that wasn't there, okay.
So I'd ask you to accept that that is necessary to maintain their exemption, they have to submit definitive within seven months of their.
Make a motion to accept the Masaka definitive submission.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And then the last item I have is the signing of the, um, sun pencil, uh, sun pencil, definitive plan, the Lumber Meadows. We submit at the mile of twenty day, appeal period has expired.
Nobody wanted the window up there, so we got the.
Jane, you have the, you have the box.
Yeah.
Jane, you have the pencil?
Yep, remember that's.
Set this up here, if you all wanna combine. Do you have the, do you have the.
Yep, yep.
Do you want to just go to your desk or do you want?
We'll come around.
Thank you.
Should we just define it?
Yeah, that's the, that's the, yeah, North Service Road.
Yeah.
Further down, yep.
So, we have bills, um, James payroll and totaling eight twenty-seven twenty for the, uh, payroll period ending eleven thirty two thousand and sixteen. And we have one for Phil. And it's. For the period November fifth to November sixteen for three thousand.
I'd like to make motion to approve those.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You said that, you said?
No, I didn't say that.
You'd sign?
No, sorry, we're talking with the mile, sorry.
Okay, okay, yeah. Um, any other?
Uh, no, it's all hit.
Show sign. Oh, and while you're signing, while we're signing, um, we have a couple of applications for, um, the planning director. The majority of these look like they're architects, there's one.
There's actually two that are, that are currently planning directors.
Yes.
So, one of these is, is an architect, no planning experience whatsoever, the other two have planning, planning experience.
There's only one that's currently a planner.
Nope, there's, there's two, well, maybe not currently, but previously held positions of planning director. Mr., is it Dee Dee?
Yep.
Is planning director in Georgia right now, and, um, who knows, is Sabina Bedrick.
So everybody can read them.
He's there, but he has been, he's been a city planner for several other
There's one of them that seems, it seems a little, a little
A little light on the experience? What, is that what you said?
But, yeah, oh, um Got a little sharp, but still seems like a little more, uh, unobvial, a little
So, you want to look at one, each one at a time?
Let's, um, let's all go home and read them.
Okay, I'll look at them, I'll browse them.
Yeah, I, I
Give you my opinion on, on, on at least two of them.
He just can't talk about names, I, I only, I only like one of them.
Okay. Uh, I think two of them are qualified, so I think there's one that definitely isn't qualified.
I wonder if a small petition happened in the case of the
Yeah, all the things, same, uh, yeah, we said no paper, did you have
Which one? For London, yeah, whenever, whenever.
Did you look at these ones?
I did.
I get it, okay.
It's four of them?
Yeah, you have to sign each sheet.
Four of them, right?
Yes.
Do you want me to add that to the agenda? Do you have these? Yeah, that's, yeah. All right, can we, I'll be, I'll be good, do we want adjourned, or have a
We have anything else to cover?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.